Five thirty-two P M and it's at this time I will call the City of Bellevue on council meeting's order. It is Monday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, this is a reminder to please turn off all cell phones except for emergency personnel. Uh, mute them if you are in City Hall and please mute yourself if you are on Zoom. Amy, we pleased to roll phone.
Yep, uh, Mayor Dodi.
Yes.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Obenah.
Yes.
Okay, notice of agenda compliance. Finding with a regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four dash two zero four. Within forty-eight hours prior to the meeting at the City of Bellevue City Hall. Post office and on the city's website on July ten, twenty twenty-five.
I moved that the notice for the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting was completed in accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four two oh four. So.
All in favor?
Right.
Call for conflict is outline the Idaho Code, Idaho Code seventy-four dash four zero four. New conflict for tonight's agenda.
Uh, I would like to move to amend the agenda to add an agenda item to repeal Bellevue Resolution two-two-three-sixth. Because it is in direct conflict with Idaho state law.
Just gonna be amendment requirements, can you provide? Uh, any reason why this would be an emergency declaration or need immediate action report?
Uh, well, I think it needs an immediate action because we're in direct conflict with Idaho state law. This is like the fourth time I've tried to do this. And I do not actually agree with the stipulation what they're saying it has to be an emergency. What I had read in the open evening law suggested that um, that there simply needed to be a valid reason that it hadn't happened. And as we discussed.
Well, and I give out multiple values, so happy to take the floor here. Um, uh, councilmember Reed and I have discussed why I didn't make it on this agenda. I said, based on the length of the agenda, I didn't think that the repealing of that resolution was a priority. And in addition to that, um, in speaking with our marshal, state law by default supersedes city law. So state law is in fact nulling our resolution. So bringing it to council and repealing it uh, is more of cleanup work than it is uh, kind of a substantial action. And I didn't find that that cleanup work was as valuable as the other things that were on the agenda tonight.
Uh, okay, but I, I, I don't know where we. Yeah, but legislating against our, our state legislature is actually an affirmative action. And yes, they do nullify us, but we have, we are trying to legislate in conflict with our own state legislature. So I thank you for considering it and.
Well, and it's not my decision, it's the council's decision, so you're welcome to put a motion on the table.
Okay, I move for repeal Bellevue's Resolution two-two-three-sixth. Because it is in conflict with Idaho statute nineteen dash sixty-one oh two.
This is our first thing, make a motion to amend the agenda.
Um, I did that, no, 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 second.
You have to, let's put that back on the floor, but that'll.
So just proceed, really, something secondary.
So there's a motion on the floor to amend the agenda. Do we have a second? So you're not hearing that motion, that's, okay, they're moving on, Diana. Thank you very much. Item three, mayor and council reports. Um, I'd like to open it up by just doing a couple fun announcements. Um, we have a pizza party that is being held for teens and tweens. On July seventeenth from three to five at the Bellevue Library. Um, the intention of this party is to uh, draw this group of individuals to come and enjoy this pizza party at the library. And in turn, hope to get a little more feedback around our community project. Um, there's been a few publications out there that we have gotten great feedback for most of the community, but we have found there's a little bit of gap in that group. Um, that age group and that demographic. And we would hate to design a project for everyone's voices. So we are looking to um, hear from some more teens and tweens about what they would love to see happen um, around the meeting project. So uh, we've got a flyer that Kristen has produced. It'll be up at City Hall or make sure that it's on social media. If anyone wants to take a picture and pass it around or have it sent to you, um, be happy to kind of share that. Um, so that's that one there. And then I just wanted to make sure that um, do you want to pass that on the phone?
Oh, sorry.
It's welcome to have that one. Uh, I just want to make sure everyone's aware that we have a budget meeting tomorrow, tomorrow night. Um, and sometimes that gets a little lost in the shuffle of council meetings and P and Z. So if anyone would be able to watch in, participate, sit, um, it's our next budget workshop.
And is that at five-thirty, Mayor?
Yeah, it's at five-thirty, thank you, Diane. Um, a couple of things that I want to acknowledge um, from citizen emails I've been receiving. Um, these aren't for discussion tonight, but they are things that are working on internally within staff and departments. Uh, a re, a reek, you know, kind of invigorated concern around ATV and four-wheeler traffic and noise that's happening within the city of Bellevue. Um, dangers of not wearing helmets. Uh, so this is a reminder, anyone under eighteen, please wear a helmet when you're operating one of those vehicles. I say wear a helmet whenever you can, but under eighteen, please wear a helmet. Um, and be very conscious of the noise that you are producing as you're driving these vehicles around the community. There are rules, right, Marshall, around decibels, around their volume.
Decimal levels and then also one thing to reiterate is if you're under sixteen. Have a pair of.
Good view. Thank you, so um, a bit of concern around sound. Um, time of night that sound is happening, you know, we have a lot of people driving around ten, eleven o'clock with music in conjunction with use of those vehicles. So please be conscious of your community, your neighbors, uh, and general public safety when operating those vehicles. Um, another one that has come up is uh, in the central division, there's been discussion around the continued construction, the Malone project, and concerns around what the landscaping looks like. Um, that landscaping plan has come and come and passed through uh, P and Z. But it is something that myself, the council president, and our community development director are uh, kind of looking at and making sure that uh, it's, it's of the standards of what Bellevue would want to see for that portion of the community. So just wanted to acknowledge the emails that I have been receiving and that those are things that we are working on internally with department heads at this time. Um, I do have a guest at City Hall today that I'd love to introduce and give a few moments. Um, this is Mike Pahanka, did I say it right?
Yes, you did, yes.
Mike Pahanka, uh, one of our representatives, I'd love to take the floor and introduce himself.
I'll just hand everyone my card, I sir. That's cute, cute. Um, so I just want to, first of all.
Already have it.
My chest, I can't remember who has it, who doesn't have it, but um. There you go, sir, excuse me, we got, there you go, sir.
Um, I've got it.
There we go.
I may, why don't you put a couple here?
Yep, I will do that, so.
It's a nice place.
Um, they want to thank you for, one, I don't know if I kind of messed up to be put on the agenda. I want to thank you first of all, mayor, council, um, and support staff for the city of Bellevue. Just to remind you, I'm just here to serve, um, not a politician by any means, just here to try to remove roadblocks for you guys. Uh, so nice, we've been up here a couple of times since, but how your road had so many potholes. And then getting a phone call and um, just a couple of, but getting a phone call and then being able to uh, see the project come to light and see how nice it is to drive through uh, the city of Bellevue. Uh, I know there's uh, I don't know if you possibly may have, I've heard uh, maybe sewer issues or uh, issues there. All these small communities uh, that I've talked to, it seems like they all have little, little things uh, that I'm going to do my best to see what we can do to help take care of those or at least help try to find funding for it. And so that's what I'm here for, I try to be. One person uh, commented, this was about a year and a half ago that I was working on a project where she said, you're a problem, so. That's what I try to do, is take care of the problems, but please, whatever um, you need, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm here to take care of the constituents of uh, District twenty-six, so. Want to thank you for your time and uh, I don't know if you have any questions, if not.
They'll call you back right away.
I, I try, I try, so, oh, than, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
It's important to know, also, he's accompanied by his lovely wife.
Who's looking so supportive of the work that he does, and so.
Right, go fumbling the ball. That's always just get to where it doos her, that's.
But my guy, a great good man is a tired woman.
Yes, he's quite good, relax, yes. Thank you.
Well, while he's here, does anyone have any questions um, for Mike, because he made the journey? Any topics you'd like to throw his way that are priorities? And if you hit the nail on the head, sewer water is, is always a thing and um, Chris Johnson, you may have, may have not met right there, Public Works Director. Great contact there.
You know, what's interesting on the sewer water project, so there's, which, which is kind of a bad deal, they stayed a lot of ten million dollars. And it was for small communities. And but uh, it's almost like you have to be ready to have already the EPA. Are now um, they just ready to go and that ten million got gobbled up like that in small communities. I know Kerry was trying to get something and they have theirs pretty much all in line and ready to go, pull the trigger on. Get that, that money goes so quick and if you're, every year you have to refile for, even though you may be put in for it this year. Every fall or November, refile for it because if not, it just gets dropped on. So just give you hits up on that.
Last year, there were sixty-two projects submitted around the state of the wastewater community and of that, uh, few were funded. So you can see how bad a problem is and there is quite a bit of need out there.
Well, thank you for being here.
My pleasure, because I'm here at my state.
Oh, please do. Please do, thank you. Um, and I will open up the floor to council, uh, love to go little roundtable, see if anyone has any updates in your respective areas.
Updates.
Can we have an update?
Sorry, the one update, and I just wanted to share, you know, Tom, my, his lovely wife was saying, of course, um, um, that the passing of one of our big time, long time city residents, Grace Aiken. And so, and that was, that was lovely today, it was a service for her, but I'm sure coming up, we will, there were some conversations about what we could do to, you know, establish a fund for her that'll help support the like, I was gonna say, the museum.
Museum.
And I, and, and Mike had approached me and I said I'd be happy to, but however it, you know, it comes about. But I just normally ignores that, longtime resident. I, I was saying to, to Mike, I was like, I am so sure right up to the moment. Grace was yelling at God, you better open the gates for me because I'm not waiting. That's just how she was, so, but I did want to acknowledge that, 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 that was a big deal for us in the community.
Thank you very much for making that statement and making the rest of us aware in the city. And I do look forward to seeing um, ways in which that, from the city and on the outside level, uh, we can honor Grace. Thank you very much.
Well, I am back on working to uh, reestablish kind of the Bellevue relationship with the airport. And to try to work together to address the changes in air traffic and the issues that, you know, are affecting Bellevue with the, the patterns and the um, increased traffic. And um, so I have a meeting with them uh, in the next couple of weeks to just, just try to start that communication going and seeing what we can do collaboratively to, right, address that.
Is that something that you would uh, please loop Ryan in on as those kind of discussions evolve? Just to kind of make sure that we're having cross-department representation of the information that's coming out of it?
Uh, sure.
Okay, thanks so much.
Let's see, yeah. Pretty much, only thing that I have to talk about is uh, liberty. You got all the bands lined up. Uh, um, we got a Mexican band, it's really good, get all the bands, all bands are from Idaho this time. And question for you, and talk about that, which is uh, serving drinks, they're putting it out at auction, we'll talk later.
All right, on a personal note, we'll have that conversation. Okay, thank you, Tom.
Uh, maybe just quickly, kind of a little bit of a follow-up to what Tammy mentioned was, you know, the Bellevue Historical Society, Grace's passing and kind of she moved from the community in like April, uh, it's been sort of a new group of people that have taken that on a little bit and, and so there's been a variety of people that have volunteered there this summer and so that it wasn't one burden or, or a burden on multiple people, which has been great and, and so um, and maybe also whether anyone at the city has heard from the Idaho Historical Trust, um, or Idaho Heritage Trust, I mean, with their report, okay. Brian Shigden said, no, so nothing, yeah, that's, um, very good, we look forward to that report.
Thank you.
Mayor, uh, while this may not be directly related to community development, um, I did have a conversation a couple of weeks ago with Chris Corwin, who is the Disaster Services Coordinator with Plain County. Um, and uh, they have not been having terribly regular meetings. Um, but that they, they do hope to be able to um, uh, get meetings on a more regular basis. And they are including me in their mailing their email list. I did talk with uh, Chief Beaver a couple of days ago, um, and, and he's aware that, that I had an interest in um, attending or participating in some way in those meetings to make sure Bellevue stays engaged in the loop. I know uh, Officer Gaston has been attending, so anyway, I just wanted to report on that.
And then um, anything in regards to Bura, that maybe should be around.
Uh, Bura, we um, are looking for a commissioner. Um, so if anyone is interested or knows anyone that's interested, it's not a massive time commitment, but it, it is, it is a commitment. And so uh, I am, I am looking for someone, please send them my way.
And in terms of the budget?
We have a budget hearing on July twenty-second, but thank you for those prompts.
It's okay.
Wonderful, okay.
I want to share one, because I know what was brought up.
Please do.
I wanted to say thank you and I would note that either the sheriff or Brian needed to do anything more. And, and maybe you, you did, but I was really happy to see that, that uh, mobile home that had suffered a fire had been removed and I just wanted to make note of that, that it looks nice and cleaned up on Main Street. Good, so.
Thank you for noting this.
Not a sound.
There aren't any other reports, I'm going to move on to item four, public comment. This is um, for items of concern not on the agenda, comments are limited to three minutes. If there's anyone in City Hall or on Zoom who'd like to make a call for comment, please raise your hand and I will call upon you.
I do, but I think it's on the agenda, right? It's regarding.
Yes, ma'am.
Those burdens and mobile.
Yes, so it'll be on the agenda and we will open up for public comment on that end, okay? All right, see no hands on Zoom and see no hands in City Hall, I will go ahead and close public comment. Moving on to item number five, this is our consent agenda. Um, we have approval of meeting minutes, May twenty, twenty twenty-five to twenty, May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Approval of claims, June twenty-fourth through July fourteen, twenty twenty-five. Uh, C Department head reports. D Project update of the wastewater plant from Great Western Engineering. E Project update of the water project from American Company and F Approval of annual retail alcohol and beverage applications. I, I would just say, is there anything that anyone would like to discuss, but it sounded like you were out of circle?
Uh, I'd like to, I had some questions about the wastewater um, plant list. Um, and I was curious, I, I don't really see in this any of the routine maintenance. It's probably still needing to be going on for the membranes and things like that. And I'm also wondering about um, anything that we would expect to see here, having to do with the rehabilitation of the lagoon. I just have some concerns that there are a lot of hidden costs that we're not aware of and, and that this is a fabulous timeline of this, but I was wondering if there was more information or if we had about what these things were costing, that they are all going to be covered by the insurance money? And how that applies to um, what we understand of the current membrane, membranes, which I'm assuming is something that I'm assuming they have a fair idea about, right? Because of on the, the routine maintenance for that stuff, so I was just truly would like to know more about what costs may be lurking that we don't know about yet.
So before um, last week and before coming into this meeting, I did have a, a chat with uh, our Andrew, our representative of Great West Engineering. Um, this, our intention was to get a, a turnaround to you to have your first update for this meeting. This is a working document, so this is the initial uh, schedule of information that was put together between uh, our Chris Johnson, our Public Works Director, Bryce and our contractor and um, Andrew, uh, Great West Engineering, Andrew Kimmel, Great West Engineering. This is a living document, so the document you see in the next two weeks will uh, potentially be very different or not as different from this document. Uh, we will be adding dates of when things are completed or delays. Um, if there is further information you would like to see, uh, that would be best represented at this time in an email to uh, myself and the Public Works Director, which we can share with Andrew Kimmel at Great West Engineering as well. Um, I did ask for some modifications to the presentation of information when I spoke to Andrew as well and um, he wanted to just let you all know that this was very much just that first initial draft to get something in front of you. Um, and kind of to create the timestamp of where we started, so we can start to look at where we're going and where we've been. Great, thank you.
Yes, too.
Can you add to your report?
Yeah.
Yes, please do.
So when I wrote my report two weeks ago, it was the day before the house. Thanks for the mayor, Shelley, Dan, Chris, that should have, and if anybody else, if you were there, thanks for coming. Um, we had probably seventy-five hot dogs, fifty plus hamburgers. A load of kids having a good time and I got three, well, I have two applications and hopefully one more that will be interviewing. Um, but correctly from that up there, so, yeah. Cool. Somewhat successful.
That's great. That's really great to hear. Um, I apologize that I didn't bring that up in the mayor's report because it was quite a blast. I, I came in and got to experience the amount of kids that, bouncy house, uh, there was, Trent was on the grill. Grilling up the, the dogs and the burgers and, and it was quite a turnout.
Water balloons.
Water balloons are happening, water from the, from the, the truck was being sprayed, it was quite the scene. And what I thought was really fun to see was everyone on the bike talking, what's going on there?
Is this always birthday party?
People were driving by, they were going by, um, in their bikes, you know, those Spanish guys from catch them. Recording it on their phone, they were going by, you know, like at fifty miles an hour, but.
Compliments to you, compliments to you, chief, it was a very successful event and um, uh, just a great turnout from the community. So very happy that you put that out there and that there was conversion from it, so thank you for that update. Any other questions in regards to the consent agenda?
Uh, I had questions about the water. Uh, mostly just trying to tie it back to um, this uh, flow sheet.
Hmm.
And where, what was kind of checked off at this point, or if we're still kind of in this area of the, the P R and and just better understanding how um, the work that saw to fits in and which project it fits into. Are we still pursuing S S one, which is the, the new spring? Or is this strictly about the moving the transmission line? I'm just not, I just wasn't a hundred percent clear of where we are in the project overall.
Chris Johnson, Public Works, would you like to speak to that?
Chris Johnson, Public Works, so they're still gathering their survey data, I think they are just finishing up with some of the uh, top graph modeling. Um, we are looking at the potential of doing some rehab at the uh, collection sites, uh, but the primary is the transmission line.
Okay, so as, so I believe that's team one, right? So so far out of the five projects right now. Um, and I, and I was just trying to hearken back to what they had said, that, that new springs project is gone.
It's not necessarily gone, they have to evaluate how much uh, flow we're actually collecting, so we're trying to get flow hyper modeled, um, we need the elevation data for that. And part of the springs producing the three C F S that we are granted from our water right? And then also we have to finish identifying where the easements are because we can move within a portion of the easements within uh, ten acres of the easements. If we need to improve the lines, but if we start digging down, um, it looks like we're digging wells and we're trying to avoid that. So it's just whatever we can do to do the least amount of surface uh, damage to the property. But we will take uh, the collection system the best we can, uh, so we don't have to come back and do that in another five years. Uh, but we just really look right now, getting all the survey data and the flow data to make sure that we understand how much uh, how many C F S we're actually able to gather and plus we have to share uh, with the landowner. I think he has all one T F S right, or something, and so we just want to share we're meeting the water rights, um, before we get too far into designing or redesigning new reflections.
So has that changed since we have given the presentation? Because they presented that they had established that they were basically plowing at that three point three, what have you, but has something changed such a point in?
No, there's, we're finding that there are more, there are more tiers to the spring collections. So we have the upper and lower, then we have springs one, two, and three, so there's more collection sites than what we actually had known about. Uh, and trying to figure out how they actually come in together, are they horizontal lines that are coming to a single main line? Um, there's a lot of data that was never recorded or we just don't have, it's, it's so old on how it was originally designed. So making sure that uh, we have access to as much of the springs that all the times are collecting at a, a single point. Um, we were up there four weeks ago and we can get measurements at the orientation house. We get four hundred and fifty gallons per minute there, down at a diversion box, we get another hundred, a hundred and fifty gallons per minute. But then somehow we're taking in a thousand gallons per minute at the tank, so we're still looking for where all our water is coming from.
So can I just draw the attention back in this discussion? Um, if you look at one point four and monitor my deliverables and requirements, our first deliverable is going to be the production of the, the property boundary survey that's going to um, kind of outline all those easements boundaries. So we're very much still in our uh, certain lane survey section of kind of that flow chart document. And I know you are referencing some of the, the teeths that, and I don't have those off.
Oh, and that's okay, that's, that's the transmission line.
In case we are still in the survey section, portion of this project, um, our first upcoming deliverable is going to really um, update around that easement boundary and profit line discussion, which was one of the kind of trigger points of work that, that needed to get started before of much more of the product development can continue. Um, and then the next one, as you can see, is once that survey boundary is complete, we're then going to move into topographic survey that includes features, possible locations, the transmission line, so still surveying, still waiting for a bit of a kind of tangible outcome from that survey work. Um, and as told, it will continue during the month of July, so still in that survey section, waiting on some deliverables.
Okay, and I very much appreciate that, but I guess I'm trying to wonder how we as a council are tying it back to the bond and the projects in the bond, because those are the projects that are funded. So I, I'm just trying to see where we are in each project or where these, and where the costs are being attributed to these projects and to find out where, and it may not be right now, but where we're going to have a discussion of getting some of that money back from the bond when we find that some of the projects are, are not necessary.
So it not be, just to clarify, it wouldn't be getting money back, it would be not drawing down and utilizing the money that exists?
Well, I, I would, I would argue however, that, that concept of the bond looks to lenders and is evaluated that that is out, potential outstanding debt. So I would suggest that it's something for us to explore, maybe with the treasurer, how that impacts our credit rating. If you have a, a bond, a potential bond publication of a certain amount versus another, so that's.
I think what I'm hearing from you and I would be beneficial would be in the next update from Eric, that we would be able to review some financials of. I think what I'm hearing from you and I would be beneficial would be in the next update from Eric that we would be able to review some financials of. Current expenditures and what they've been associated to and what future expenditures could look like. Am I hearing that correctly, that that would be invaluable to you?
Uh yes, but I also think it's, you know, we're hiring Eric to do this work against a a plan that we are trying to implement. So I'm also quite content for us to to sort it out. Ourselves. I'm not looking necessarily sort of the specifics of we still don't have a second M O U with with Idaho. I'm really looking for what our perception is and how we're. We're managing the pro- the project and how we're managing the money, right? We are as a group.
Yeah, and I I mean, those financials are available also internally through our treasurer. Um I think there is value in collaborating with our project managers in communicating project information, um nothing from department heads, of course, but. Um part of the work that America is doing, you know, within the project scope is project management. And so I think that it is more than appropriate for that information also come through.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda?
Um I just kind of wanted to follow up the hand for that, but has there been any conversation with the agreement on Clear Creek for that franchise agreement?
Uh Mike sent out an email. I believe you were succeed on it today. Um we're setting up a meeting to move forward with um. He's spoken with Rick about it a little bit and um. Yeah, we're just looking south of the moon. Uh we can move forward.
Great. Can you clarify what it's about, Jessica?
So the franchise agreement with Clear Creek, um well, I haven't seen the agreement yet, so I can't really tell you what it exactly looks like.
Sorry.
So what we're looking at is just the general overall. Costs. For like how we doctors, because well, one, we have to remember them. At the fire station for reducing their constantly contaminated. Um two, it's about increasing um. It's including all, Chris, can you help me or Brian, can you help on logistics? For the franchise agreement, and what does would provide the city of Bellevue a certain.
Or so. So it would convert, so right now, um all citizens go directly to Clear Creek to have their trash services provided, correct? Um other cities, Haley and Betium, you, uh it goes in your bill from the city. And that service goes through the city and it's a fee that Clear Creek Creek. Uh gives back to the city for providing those services uh to our community members. And it would also kind of. Allow us to have a better understanding of uh dumpsters when people are ordering dumpsters, going to Clear Creek where dumpsters are allowed within. Um kind of compliance uh and dumpster usage for them in the city. Uh it could help promote uh recycling a little bit more at individual households. And so it's looking into how we can streamline uh waste management services through a already existing provider. And what that can look like for in terms of franchise fees for the city vote.
But don't the residents play those franchise fees? So would it only be people who were using the recycling that were actually using it? Or is this a all groups of career? Clear Creek would start paying this fee whether they were they wanted to recycle or not?
Uh trash. We're talking about trash.
It would just be trash.
Trash recycling, any of your kind of waste management services in terms of tangible, worldly goods that is that.
Right, partner community developer, director of the year, and it will be for solid waste services. Uh in terms of that franchise agreement, and stipulate whether it is mandatory for us and for all households, we have trash service. Although recycling, composting, all of those things, mandatory or optional, and what the associate agrees on.
So the city would start providing service or you contract through, but the city would contract through Clear Creek to provide the service rather than Clear.
The franchise agreement is their free monopoly power to operate.
Right, okay.
It's it's still to be determined of whether we would be the utility biller or provider of that or if it be brought through clearing and.
It's awesome, yeah.
It's active thing is the monopoly.
But the money is going to be added to people's bills, is that right?
Well, and also Suzanne, it's the string length of like, I don't know if you walked from, you know, Main Street up to Ninth. You counted how many dumpsters are there that summer, like construction dumpsters. Currently, how our plant exists, anybody can just have a dumpster and park in front of their yard. So it's like, one. If everybody's just throwing everything that way, nobody's recycling anything. They're just throwing it all in one dumpster and or. So it's to also provide a service. That we can um. How do I say this? To capture people to hopefully have to make the right choices rather than everybody throwing everything.
Well, and you know, I love your recycling stuff. I'm just, like I said, I'm wondering, and you're way, you're trying to figure this out. You're gonna present about.
Before council.
Yeah, and you'll see the fees.
And you'll see the fees will flush it out, we'll have a discussion. We'll be able to compare what rates uh citizens are currently paying and how it might affect them. Um so there will be plenty of time to analyze that and make a good decision on it.
And then and then part of that is having a recycling center and figuring out where we put that, like, is it in collaboration with that consent, like figuring out. So within those fees that could pay for us having what he has in the comp after or having something more in a public place so people don't just dump things.
No, I've got it. Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
I I.
No, no.
Say, actually, you said that coming for the council.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well. You know, sort of details out.
Mayor, I have uh one glaring minor uh correction to the minutes from May seventh. It was not a substantive. Uh correction and I did point that out to the city. First, I made that correction earlier today, so um. If nobody else says anything, I will move. Enter. Uh I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Obena.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Remember, I have number five, a presentation. This is a transportation plan update from Mariah Fowler from Forestland Associates. She's joining us tonight via Zoom. And you do have a copy of uh her presentation in your passports or presentation documents, so um. I would love to turn. Screen over to Mariah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and uh city council members and everyone else that's in the room uh for giving me a few minutes of your time. Uh I can share this presentation if that would be helpful. Uh one, because I like to make sure that we're all on the same page. So let me do that real quick here. All right. Since I'm not really on Zoom as much, can you still, can you see that?
Yeah, yes.
Perfect, all right. Um so we, uh as for when we came in, and that's where I work, and um we came in in um late last fall. And did an assessment of all the roads and signs and sidewalks. Um and so this is kind of just an an update of where things are in this transportation plan. Um we held our first uh technical advisory council or committee meeting um on June twenty-fifth. There were eight people out of our ten that we were trying to hope for to be there, and it was great conversation. Um so I'm trying to give a really brief overview of what was talked about. So this first uh map that you're seeing, this is your current um ownership and functional classification. Uh the things we're looking at is that they are, you have minor collectors, I guess the highways there. Um but the minor collectors and why this is important is because that classification allows the city to then go for different kind of grant funding to help um. Fix those specific roads. So this is the current um, the current plan that is in through I T D. Um so you have Cedar Street, Pine Street, uh Broadford. And then Second Avenue listed as major collectors. And I realize that one of the issues is that they're on um on Cedar Street is that you, we have a section that's closed off and not a complete thoroughfare. So that's why, one of the reasons we talked about this next picture image is um what, one of the changes of that of that specific road. And taking Cedar and making that major collector, moving it down to Elm and having it route back through so that it has a one specific flow. As a driver. Um. So that is one of the changes we're proposing as part of this plan. Um is to change that and then we're keeping Pine, Broadford and Second Street as is listed as a major. We also looked at um adding in the minor collectors, which again is just another functional classification that I T D lists different roads. Um and so proposed in putting these other roads in as a minor collector and the difference is ju- is um capacity or how many uh vehicles are on your roads. So we're proposing to add in Spruce, Birch, and then that Cedar from a major to a minor because it's that one section instead. Um Chestnut and Fifth Street. And part of this because it where it goes to the school and that flow from the neighborhoods to the highway. Are there any questions on this topic? I try to make sure I have open for questions, too.
Can I ask a question? This is Tammy Davis, and I just wanted to make sure. Are, I mean, when they, when you assess what a collector street is, it's usually based on traffic patterns, correct? Is that your, is that what establishes?
That is, that is one part of it. So one, I look at, I'm very honest and tell people, I do not live in your town. I'm not here to tell you, yes, I live in Boise, but I'm not here to tell you how your roads and. Your city should function, right? I look at what are things that can help move forward with where things are. And so one of the factors is the traffic on there. The other is in this kind of meeting, we can talk about. What are, where do you see a lot of traffic? Like in the original, if I go back to the uh the other map. Right? This school has nothing by it, but you know that there's traffic going to that school. I mean, not just like heavy trucks, you know, but you have your school buses, but you have the parents who are driving their kids to and from school, and that is not representative in this. First original functional classification map. So that, yes, to answer your question, there's two parts. Is that, yes, you actually need the traffic analysis in there, but we also look at. What is your thoughts as a city on those parts and the people that are on that committee help us, give us these ideas, right? So we're taking your information and trying to assimilate it. Does that help?
Yeah, I just wanted, because I know Cedar is kind of accessed before the school. And that that's partly why it came out as a collector then could, because the other road dead ends into the school. But Cedar, like you, people get a bigger loop. And so that's how it ended up years ago being called the collector. And I know it doesn't all go through, but I just wasn't sure if, and it goes by the park also. So it's, it has. Like it multiple functions for needing to either maintain, be maintained as a collector or as a major collector or.
I have a follow-up question to Tammy, Tammy Davis there, Christina Giordani, uh mayor. I was wondering if there is. Uh any reason if there's like a limitation to 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 your, I'm pretty sure I'm a major collector and if uh. You know, instead of foregoing Cedar as a major collector, then putting it as a minor collector, if there'd be any logic behind not maintaining that as a. Major collector as well, or if there's. If there's theory behind how many majors and minors, I guess, would be my question.
Um there's, there's different theories, yes, to answer your question on on how many majors and minors. It's not like a hard number, like you should only have two or anything like that. It's just how do you keep that? How do you keep? Based on traffic parts, how do you decide which one is the best? Um at this moment, this is what we've come up with. Um doesn't mean if it's something that you would prefer um. To to lit, keep Cedar as um a major collector, that could also be evaluated to make sure it's not a problem to look at those things. Um. Again, most of this is that, one of the best parts about right now as well is that um I T D is open, uh is the. Opportunity is open to update these majors and minor collectors um up through November first. So it's also. Again, what is it that you want? So we can help get those functional classifications submitted to them. There there's more to it than just a map and putting in um. Different color codes, right? There is more to it than that. But we want to make sure that we're looking at what is it that you want, so we can focus specifically on that as well. Like, we're not going to look at every single road if that's not what we're wanting.
Uh Jessica Obena, uh council member here, just a question in regards to why is there barricade on Cedar in the first place?
I I can answer that.
I can answer, true. Go ahead.
So we can see.
Yeah, so we can see that children have a sled. Um the the grade on Cedar is an issue. Uh it has been a big issue in the past and it's very steep. Um a lot of uh vehicular traffic was uh experiencing problems uh getting up that hill in the winter.
And down.
Um down as well, and it also proved to not be terribly safe. Um because it it got pretty heavily sanded um during the winter. And then a lot of times it didn't get swept off appropriately and you had little kids come screaming down that hill on their bikes and. Couple of pretty bad wrecks because kids are getting caught up in the in the gravel and.
Disability on that left is pretty terrible as well.
Yeah, and it's it's uh the proximity of that slope on Cedar to the elementary school. Um played a very large factor in that as well.
Yeah, 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 let's do right on. Yeah, it's all about the. Very much. Saved you by the kids for the most part, because. In the wintertime, we got a service over road or not, they were sledding down the road. And you know, and cars coming, there was disaster waiting to happen.
Yeah.
I I think one of the conversations um that may be appropriate to have, maybe not tonight, but at a future date. Uh would be uh there were some discussions about opening Cedar um during the summer months. Um when we didn't have a a lot of uh sliding. Issues. Um and so uh you know, there there was talk in the past and it seemed to be rather favorable. To opening it between the months of like May and September so that that could provide some relief. To the folks coming out of Slaughterhouse.
We did that for a few years. But they opened it in the summer for a few years, and they tried to upgrade it and to get the. The pitch. We would.
Got a lot of money.
Oh.
A lot of money, yeah.
So any questions for Mariah on this section of the presentation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um one question before we move on, the the top of the page is Tom Bergen. Um it talks about functional classifications. And in other transportation studies I've seen, those are fairly thoroughly and well-defined. And so I don't know where you are with this or whether you have examples from other jurisdictions that you could provide us that you're using as a bit of a template, but. Uh those end up being very critical, I would say, to any designation, either as a major collector or a minor collector or some other kind of street. And so like my question then is whether that has been part of the conversation so far, fairly thorough definitions of functional classifications. And if not, if there are other samples that you might forward to the city.
That is an awesome question. I appreciate that. Um yeah, we, yes, we do work with other jurisdictions. Um. Some are cities, some are highway districts, um some are counties, and we do look at those uh different breakdowns and go over those with them. Um some of that conversation was at our, at our last meeting for that um technical advisory committee meeting. Um that is something I can give you more in-depth if that's what you would like. I can definitely forward you that information. And. Uh go from there. Like if you, if you're wanting examples, um. I'm trying to think, what examples are you, are you looking for? Like, what is that designation from I T D's classification for those?
Well, I got the examples that I've seen have been in the town's transportation plan. Um and they were quite thorough. And and so. Um maybe we can communicate offline about that, but I can kind of send that and you can see what would, you know, sample that provides. And whether you're thinking and for others that are thinking along the same lines.
That would be awesome. Like I I know that there are a few people there that have my email, so that would be a best. A best communication to get started so that we can continue because I'm totally open for the discussion. Um I just want to make sure that I'm getting what exactly you're wanting, so we can help get to that clarification.
Sure.
Yeah. Can I just clear, I think maybe clarify, I have the same, I'm assuming there's just a a definition page that supports the legend.
Can I just clear, I think maybe clarify, I have the same, I'm assuming there's just a, a definition page that supports the legends. Right? So what, so what Tom was saying, functional classification, do you just have a sheet that defines those?
Um, so what, what? Yeah, no, so this is complete, like I give you maps because I'm a visual person and it's easier for me to say, do you see the colors? Great, green means this, orange means this. In the actual document, when we submit this as a whole transportation plan, um, you're looking at like probably a hundred to a hundred fifty pages in that document. So within that document, it does describe each of these different pieces. Way more detail than what just a map is showing.
Well, I think I just am trying to determine the criteria you use to make each color.
Uh, that was just for this, this one that's showing right now, that was in this meeting talking about what we would like. Versus the very first image that only has orange in it. This one. That is how I like, the orange is the only thing that, that I'm looking at discussing and that is what Ida, um, the ITD is on their website with what has been submitted prior. And then the other colors for me, it's just the city boundary, um, the other roads within Bellevue and the highway.
Okay, so would you say that any of the legends have supporting documentations, like what what criteria is acceptable for sign condition, what criteria does sidewalk condition of four need to meet, that kind of thing?
Uh, in a, in a general sense, yes, because it's um, as I get into the other maps, I can give you some, some specific details.
Okay, thank you.
Let's move on to the next page for a minute.
Perfect. All right. So um, if I go to page three. So with page three, this is a summary of um, when we came out and looked at the actual roads, we evaluated them. We looked for fatigue or alligator cracking. Um, we look for transverse cracking, so alligator cracking. It's like chunks, right? So like out, like an alligator skin, that's what we're looking for that road. How much of that is there in that one section of road between blocks? Um, is there minimal? Is it excessive? Um, that is how we rate this. Um, it's all visual from looking at them. And we look at the transverse cracking, which is going across your road, same thing. How many cracks do you have in each section that we're assessing at that moment? How wide are those cracks? Like there's a difference on if it's like very, very like a hairline crack versus like the width of a penny crack, like that's the difference of those rankings. Um, then edge cracking, how much of that edge cracking is present? And then the other one is patching and pothole with, with all of those, and that could be utilities. If it's, the road's been cut and patched because of utilities cross the road or been fixed. Um, so all of those different parts are then put into um, a formula, which then gives you this remaining service life. Typically a road when it's freshly paved, it is twenty years. Then as that road deteriorates and breaks down, you have less than left life. Um, and so that's what we call remaining service life is how much after, less than twenty years do you have? Um, so all those different factors play a part into this remaining service life map. Um, to, to me, the results, I assume are not a surprise that most of our roads, you know, are in poor condition. And um, it's, it's a very good way for us to see where the roads currently are and to help make a plan on moving forward. Um, so there, there are different avenues that you can move forward with, with a chip seal versus um, a full reconstruct. I mean, it's all, it's a huge, it's just huge answer that we try to give you the big picture, but not all the little details. Um, but I'm more than happy to give you the details if you'd like those two. But that's where this map comes from, is to give that, here's your current evaluation with all those factors. And then we use that the next step, which would be our next meeting is what plan do we want to make for moving forward? So such, here's exists, here's what current conditions are, and then a plan for moving forward. Any questions with this map? Awesome. Then I will move to the next one, which is your sign condition map. When we came out and looked at the signs, well, we look at the signs and the posts. So the next one is your, is your support condition, which is your post. Um, at the time we look at both of those, we look at what does the sign look like? Um, there are a lot of signs that are, that are south facing, right? That then you have um, the sun beating on them and they're faded. Um, if there's any kind of degradation in those actual signs, that also plays a factor on what ranking those signs get. And so then this is just um, a map of all those different signs where um, their conditions are currently ranked. And then the following one is about the post. So to me, very similar, it just depends on if it's the sign face or if you're talking about the TELSA or, or whatever post it has that, that, that sign specifically is on. So any questions about those two maps? All right, so the final one I sorry, go ahead.
This is a question from Mariah and Chris Johnson. Is this data going to be available in anything that was converted into the GIS software?
Yeah, it's all GIS, that's what we have.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. It's great data, thank you.
Yeah. Um, and then to the final one is about the sidewalks and paths, we put them in two separate categories because you have sidewalks and then you have paths. Um, we did look at the sidewalks along the um, highway, even though I don't believe technically there, uh, this is a I was, it's a technical, who owns that sidewalk? We assess them. So you have, here's what those sidewalks are. Um, and those are just looking at, um, are there tripping hazards? Um, is the top of it still smooth or has it started to wear away or is it really um, broken down? So that is how those were, were assessed. We were not evaluating for ADA compliance on any of those sidewalks because that was not in our scope of work. Just want to be clear that that's not in there. Great. So any questions on this map? All right, so our next um, technical advisory committee meeting is actually next week on July twenty second. Um, and I can come and do an update after that if you would like that as well. If I was asking you an update.
A lot of value in that, so please, um, let's plan to have you do an update after that.
Great. All right. Any other questions that I can help you with?
May, Mariah, may I ask just um, regarding the, the legends and the uh, supporting documentation or the uh, definitions for how you get to those, those legends that are used? That's great. I just was wondering also about when you are looking at service life. Are you, are you not only, and like the example of Pine Street, are you only taking to, into consideration, and not Pine Street is bad anyway? It's a, it's a major collector, but are you only looking at the top of the surface? Uh, is there any consideration in this to the fact that under the lipstick on that pig, there is no base? You know, just saying.
I love your analogy. I'm like, I tried really hard to be really uh, positive about things too, and I'm like, um, so one of the back one of the backgrounds is that we are aware how these roads were built. Um, and you're, you're right, okay, going, when I'm in school and when I go to school, they tell you, here's how you build a road, and this is how all roads are built. However, then we have reality, that's not how all built, our roads are built. Um, I would say majority of your roads do not have um, a base in there. And that is part of the problem and why they will continue to crack or continue to degrade. Um, so when we actually come out there and look at it, no, we only can look at what we see on the top. We don't do a geotech, so a geotech report can drill holes and give us what the rest of it looks like, right? And, and that is not part of the scope. And um, to be honest, if the things that you are trying to do with this plan, it could be my perception, only my perception, not company, but my perception is that could be a waste of money to do a geotech on a road for this assessment. That is a great tool to use if you're going for um, a grant that wants to know what exactly is wrong with your road. That would be a great reason to use it in that situation, right? Or if it's something specific, like there are um, uh, some of the other, one of the reasons I like to, to bring this up is part of the reason for this transportation plan from my perspective is to help you get a good plan and then help get funding to make these roads better. Um, as we move forward to our next part, we talk about um, a capital improvement plan. And so one of that really is to list out, these are our strategic roads that we want to get money for or to start with rebuilding. And part of that rebuild assumption on my part is that you'd want to actually build, which we putting in a base, adding in a, a nice uh, hot mixed asphalt on top, right? And then start a chip seal on that one because once that is paved, you really want to chip seal within a couple of years to seal in whatever cracks can be there so that that road stays great longer. Like I know you have some new roads. That's a great thing to think about. It's like what, where is the best place to put your money on some part, like your um, lipstick on a pig analogy? There are parts of the, of the road that is falling apart, we should do what we can to maintain where it's at. Um, but it wouldn't be a good idea to come and just pave over top of that because all, all the deformities you have underneath, you just put lipstick on the top, you just put a mat on top, those are still going to be there. So you need a better, a better base in, I would say, majority of your roads. And that costs money and I assume that everybody doesn't have a million dollar tree that sits out back and you just pull one off every time you near the million dollars. So it's, how do you um, pray your toys and look forward to the future on what you need to do? And putting in bases is a major, major thing.
And I guess I, and I appreciate that you caught on to my analogy. I just wanted to make sure also that this type of report will be sufficient enough to help us achieve those things as much as we say, you know, we look out across the way and and there's cracks, what have you, I want to make sure that this report is going to be sufficient enough for us to be able to acquire the funding and move forward and not have somebody come back and go, well, you know, can't you just resurface or what have you? So I just wanted to make sure we move forward.
I, I totally I totally appreciate that, that question. I'm like, I know that, I don't know if these cities, I don't remember who was on the council members when um, they did interviews for this specific project, but that was one of the things that I know that we focused in on is like, we have worked with the city of Rupert. I'll tell you, it's another bigger city that we've worked with. We have other small ones, they're way smaller than you um, that we've gotten funding for. Um, city of Rupert is one of them, and I can't remember an exact dollar amount that we've gotten them in the last, let's say, five to ten years. Um, but I'm going to tell you, it's in the millions, a couple of million dollars in there. Um, I also like to look at like long-term budgets. Generally speaking, to take a road and rebuild it is roughly a million dollars a mile. Um, and so how do you take that and build in a whole city? Because you don't have a billion dollars to get a bunch done, right? So it's how do you strategically pick those pieces that are going to get those? So yes, part of the, I guess to reiterate that, yes, the part of, from my perspective of your plan is to help get you funding. Now, some of the funding may have matches, like a, a match to go with that funding, some don't. But that's my, my intention is to get the plan together to help give you an idea of what the future looks like and to help get you money to accomplish that, because that's what I want for you.
Thank you. Mayor, may I? Uh, uh, Mariah, I had a question, not so much about surfacing, but of uh, regarding design. We have a Bradford Road that has a very awkward hairpin turned uh, off, off the top of the highway. Um, down onto Bradford. Um, that road services a, a trailer park that is very densely populated, lots of little kiddos. Um, and their, their uh, challenge is to try and make it up the top of that hill and cross Main Street um, safely. And this has been a concern of mine for several years and I'm hoping that this can stay on someone's radar screen there at Forest Run so that if there is money available at some point for a, a redesign of, of the top of that top of that hill, so we could at least get a, a separated pathway or some kind of sidewalk situation so that those kids are safe. Um, getting up to the top of that hill to, to get to school.
Thank you so much for bringing up honestly, the safety for kids, because in, like, I have driven all of your roads. I was out there and that is a difficult corner for that situation. And I believe this is one of the parts, so ITD does have a representative on this committee. And so he did bring in some insight and I believe he was talking about this specific intersection um, and what that development would look like or redesign could look like. And I think it was also talked about that the two parcels just north of that intersection, um, I can bring over my Google Maps because I'm looking at what you're talking about. Um, I believe those were also being sold, if I'm not, I could be mistaken, so don't, don't take my word on that one because it's just, to me, it's rumor unless you guys say it's, but I thought these parcels, one of these parcels could be developed.
Yeah, it's underballed. Right there.
Yeah.
And that may be an opportunity to work with a prospective buyer to uh, to help with that situation.
Exactly. And, and to me, that's not like, if, if, if it's this part of the parcel, it would be a great opportunity to say, hey, look, can you also put sidewalk down this backside of your parcel? And to work with ITD if there's any other rules or regulations or um, things that need to be put into there, because to me, it's, it's in teamwork, right? Teamwork makes the dream work to get that piece uh, set up better. Doesn't mean we can't help you out with that.
Thank you so much, Mariah, for, for joining us tonight and um, giving it your time and I look forward to the next updated presentation.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is already had some training done to go about in, in, you know, that survey of even. Okay. See, that can be a specific grant, a safe route to school. Yeah.
Okay, I am going to move us on to old business. This is item number seven. Consideration of ordinance number twenty-five dash zero six, amended W code title three, chapter five, mobile food vendors to expand mobile vendor licensing to include non-food related businesses providing for licensing criteria, term fees and related requirements. I'll go ahead and get us started. Um, we, in your packet, provided a little bit of background of how this was a discussion topic at our city council meeting on June ninth. Um, we extrapolated uh, council members' feedback um, discussing the potential implications of the ordinances and concerns that were raised. Um, I wanted to take it a step further back to why this even came to you for discussion. Um, it was something that was brought to our attention by business owners and council members um, who had concerns and or questions around the uh, how, how someone is able to vend on Main Street, the private market and the lack of regulation. Um, when I had that initial discussion with our Marshall Pergastin, um, it was made very clear to me that if it was not prohibited or regulated within our ordinance, that our Marshals Department had no way of enforcing um, or regulating uh, any of that mobile vending that was happening. So that is the backstory of why it even came forward for discussion is the need for information, documentation uh, within our ordinance that states either explicitly prohibiting it and or regulating it. Um, and so per the feedback I received from the council and discussions with staff, uh, I have brought back to you an amendment to uh, the ordinance with the priority of uh, regulating the mobile vending that uh, is currently happening and future mobile vending that could happen. Um, that will, that does encompass, encompass mobile food vending and non-mobile food vending. Uh, I felt that it was appropriate to regulate that vending to the business zone only. And uh, it would follow the same permitting stipulations that has already been applied to our mobile food vendors. Uh, and that is outlined in the ordinance as well, so that would be um, not to cover all of it, but a couple of highlights is a, applying for the mobile vending license. It would be uh, providing uh, proof of insurance, it would be providing proof of documentation from the landowner that you have permission to vend on the property. It is a sales tax ID number or a temporary sales tax ID number. Uh, and it's a permit fee, just to name a few things that are outlined in there. So I would like to present this. So I would like to present this proposed ordinance amendment to you. Um, in there, you have the track changes and a document that didn't have the track changes, so it was a little bit easier for you to read. And so I would open it up for any questions uh or discussion and uh please be aware, council, that I I do intend to open this up for public comment. So discussion with your self-surprised would be the next step.
Well, sorry, I was gonna say thank you for oh, for providing this memo with that. I thought it was great, very.
I think the uh see changes that are are good. See, I think the changes are good. You know, it, no offense, you have to, for example, uh vendor maybe and next to Splash and Dash and no bathrooms, pretty good bathroom. Uh, and uh, and guppies or, you know, it it don't, they go to bathroom in guppies. What, we, I think they're bathrooms. They just have, have a, you know, washing their hands. And that's, I think that's important to have.
Yes, um, I'll go back to that point um that Sean just made um and provide maybe a little bit of history. This ordinance really came about um out of COVID. We had a lot of uh our restaurants closed and there were people that wanted to still be able to make a living somehow. And so food vendors uh started happening and we did require the hand, the hand sanitizing station um and uh and trash removal. I don't think there was any requirement for for a bathroom. Um, but but that's really kind of how this was born. Um, uh, one thing I did um wanna go back to on this is that you, you have mentioned um keeping this in the business district. What if somebody is doing this not in the business district? And they're, they're selling their wares in the park or and not during not during a special
It's not listed as a permitted use and
So does uh, no. To add mobile vendors as a permitted use in the business district.
Yes. That's what controls the kind of businesses.
Right, right.
Hold on one second, I want to pause here. Brian, can we have a a discussion about this really quick? So I'll let you take it on and then I'll back, I'll back up.
The director, uh, the temporary businesses are kind of a gray area if they're a land use regulated item or very business life regulated item. I think to be safer, what hurt to do uh amendment to put it in the business district zoning code so that it were kind of covered on the basis. That required saying fully anonymous volunteering.
So um, thank you for that. I think there has been uh larger discussions about big picture zoning discussion, zoning changes and um kind of needs for that moving into the future. And I think that is a priority of myself and the community development department. But at this time, this is uh what has been presented to you that would be able to be enforced uh by the marshal's department in order to regulate or prohibit. And the language around mobile vending being allowed in the business zone only should suffice um until zoning uh definitions and changes are presented for your uh review and approval. Suzanne?
I, I thought what the city attorney just said was that it's, that if, why, if we have to make a change to permit it, doesn't, it sounds like it's already not permitted. So
Marshall, can you speak to this really quickly?
We're currently permitting the mobile food vendors, even though it hasn't been approved. Um, so the main thing for me to be able to enforce the code is we need to have prohibited uses. They cannot do that. Um, just because it's not permitted, that might be a planning and zoning thing where planning and zoning can then go after a property owner, but I can't be anything like that.
Which I, I a hundred percent agree, but if then it doesn't, if what you're referring to does not prohibit anything or and is not usable or enforceable, why would we need an amendment for it? With the zoning or what have you. I understand, I, so uh I'm just, I'm just, I was unexpected and then the gray area around what seemed to me to be businesses operating in there, but I guess um what I would, would say is that would, to your point, and I think you you covered all the bases with this, is if our intent is simply to regulate and and permit anything that comes forth and passes muster to vend on Main Street, then this is the path for it, right? They can pop up wherever they'd like. I would like to argue um that, that we should not permit it and that it has been or that it has the potential to be. And I, I think that it currently is detrimental to our existing small businesses. I've, I've said how much I love the taco truck and I do love the taco truck. I love the one who rents it. But I think that it packs the the lunch trade in that, that area. And I think if, you know, we're all talking about repaving roads and all this excitement, but some of the fundamentals are supporting the businesses we have now and making these small steps now to um to better support those businesses and make it more attractive for someone to try and do a brick and mortar lunch service in addition, or maybe it benefits Mahoney's because he finds, you know, people aren't crossing the street quite so much. I don't know exactly the impact, but um I do understand the impetus and I, I guess I'm suggesting that we take it a step further and just say no, and to deal with our existing businesses that are a goal, that we value, um figuring out you know, how we can work with them. I think right now there's only one really operating. Are there more than one taco truck currently operating? Bumblebee is, is an extension of that business.
I think, I believe we have three permits currently available, but one is intermittent.
Yes, you're right. We have three permits um that have been filed.
Yes.
And have been approved at this time under the mo- the current mobile food vendor permit. Um, so, but so that would be my question for clarification from you. Are you suggesting prohibiting all mobile vending on Main, in the business zone, on Main Street or all, and all mobile vending?
That form of business, mobile vending is a form of business, yes.
Okay.
Um, uh, but I also, as we're discussing this, when I read through this and the things that you've covered and it was great, the presentation and everything. If it is strictly about regulating the, you know, here's the answer on giving you know, the ability, it just seems like we have such a low, we have such an opportunity where this is, it's probably as easy as it's ever gonna be to support our existing businesses. This is as easy as it ever gonna be with really only one truly active mobile vendor at this time. The two oh one truck has a sign, come visit us, and they have their two oh eight has a sign and so I would just bring that forward. If we're really looking to revitalize Main Street and to take, these are the types of steps that we need to be taking.
I would argue that the two oh five tacos wouldn't have the opportunity to get into the brick and mortar unless they have that taco truck and that opportunity. When there, I do believe you should support our current businesses, but if you don't, if you don't have competition, I think competition is a good thing and it gives people opportunity to expand. And um and I mean, just from a younger generation, I think variety is important. And where we are, and yes, I understand people's concerns. Uh, but the Wood River Valley isn't going to be less extensive anytime soon. And I believe Bellevue is an opportunity to support all people and young people in our valley.
Thank you. No, you know, as, I own a business in Main Street. We pay a lot of money, a lot of money to put everything. Having our bathrooms available, I've had people eat across the street uh at the taco truck come and pee in our, our restaurant. No, we told them we gotta leave, but you got pissed off. No, you, you have to realize, all the vendors on, not the vendors, all the brick and mortars on Main Street are paying a lot of money. You think, I go, did you pay a lot of money?
That's not what I said. For creativity within, or that's all I'm saying. If you roll this out, then you know.
Letter, someone goes, well, the young people, well, you have the young people.
Right.
You gotta buy a brick and mortar. That's what the taco truck uh way, they bought, they didn't buy, but they're ready now, you know, uh that's place.
Right, because they have an example to go and say, hey, I need a loan to do this and I have proof from this last year being in my bootra to get into a brick and mortar. It's a stepping stone. So ruling it out altogether.
I didn't see that, but yeah, that's appreciate the brick and mortars. Because I tell you what, in the restaurant business, these days, it is tight. You know, you can make, in the old days, we made fifteen, fifteen cents for the dollar profit. You were killing it. Now, it's three percent. You're killing it. It's, you know, it's, it's all tight in it. And anything against that, you know, it'd be, you know, I'm, I'm just saying. It is tight.
And I just want to zoom back out and say, and I think I did say that the opening part of this discussion is the intention of regulating is the, is the equal application of the permitting processes for businesses who want to operate within the city of Bellevue. So understanding the uh kind of the overhead implication, implicat- implicat- Thank you so much. Implications of a brick and mortar business and just um, you know, saying there's, there's an e- equal application of that to mobile vending within the city of Bellevue. So um, thank you for both of your comments. Diane or Tom, any kind of other follow-ups standing?
Let's hear from the people.
Okay, I know, but I guess I just wondered.
Do you want to pause and open it up for public comment?
Can I just ask that question?
Of course, yeah.
Just for clarification, because now all of a sudden I feel like the water just got muddy. It's always muddy, anyway. The, if our business zone, if in our, in our zoning, we don't authorize mobile vendors, not food, mobile vendors. How are we trying to decide to create in ordinance that um controls or or monitors mobile vending if it's not really in our allowing and our zoning?
This ordinance exists currently. Um, this is an amendment to an already existing ordinance. And then Brian and Eric, we can dive further some, correct if I'm wrong, but our zoning doesn't probably expressly prohibit it or expressly allow it.
I agree, it falls within the definition of business use, which is defined in our, in our category, something as a purchase and sale or other detailed transaction indoor or outdoor. So.
I just want to make sure.
No, that's a great I feel like that's a clarifying discussion, but again, it doesn't pro- expressly prohibit and or allow. Um, but we are again talking about business use of
and the regulation of that. It's a ordinance since two more regulation of that.
It sounds like there is not that use.
Well, you could say it's defined as a business use because it's a purchase, sale, other detailed transaction indoor or outdoor.
Right, and it's, it's not licensed in any way. Okay, okay.
Per our marshal, we need explicit coverage prohibiting and or regulating in order for him to come, i- i- in order to regulate compliance.
I a hundred percent agree. I just don't want to see this come back as its own amendment, that we have to amend something in the design.
Let me back up really quick. I'm not talking about amending the zoning. I know, I want to make sure this is very clear. I'm not talking about amending the zoning for this. I'm talking about in future discussions, in looking at zoning, there's a lot of discussion about what you want, what you don't want, what you're happy with in terms of developments, what you want in terms of growth. Those are all very big picture zoning discussions that we need to bring back to the table. So not amending our zoning for something like this. Thank you. Tom, I'd love to hear from you on this.
Um, yeah, I, I don't maybe have any additional comments. Um, I guess maybe just one kind of philosophical approach is that if something is compelling to change or to adopt their ordinance, then um, you know, it needs to be evaluated further. Um, if it's not compelling, then it shouldn't go forward. And I was struggling, I guess, this one of whether this is a compelling uh change.
Well, so Tom, I might ask you, because the last time we had this meeting, you were, you felt that we should not have mobile vending. Do you feel that that's not part of this current discussion? You've changed your opinion on that or this is, or I was just curious.
But I ha- haven't read or learned anything that would persuade me to change my thing.
And in terms of the other um element of of what how this all started and how the mayor brought it up originally a few weeks ago was that we do want to empower law enforcement to you know, enforce these things. I, I happen to also share your concern that we've not yet created an infrastructure that could actually support you and and needing to maybe look up who recently popped up and know if their license store. Well, I think it's part of the, the, but I think it's part of the reason we would adopt something. Now, we don't have an infrastructure to support it being applied, but um, you know, I do agree that we, we, you know, part of this is about empowering the, the marshal one way or another. I'm for empowering him by saying, creating something that says, no, we don't have this here. Or I think this is the alternative, whereas we license having this here. Does that sound right? Does that sound like the conversation we're having?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I just
I appreciate that point and the point that's been raised about that. Um, so.
Rick, can I ask you for clarification? I'm sorry, Mayor. Um, when you said, when you were talking about permitted uses in the business district and you said business, professional, public or social service offices? Is that what you said or is that, that's, that's what I'm asking?
Okay, yeah.
Well, I, I looked at that, then I also looked at business use, which is that definition, so there's definition of business use.
And I, I, I looked at that definition as well because
Saying that that's allowed in business, that's maybe by business.
That's what, how I'm reading it.
So I think this originally came about because we weren't really sure where mobile vendors fell. Were they permitted use or not? Because they kind of meet the definition of business use, but they kind of don't, because they don't. And they have specific kind of issues to deal with that as far as sanitation and stuff like that. So I mean, if you really, in a perfect world, you're maybe defining mobile business uses and then decide whether you want them in the business district.
Not that definition already lives.
Oh, it's, it is currently proposed as a definition, well, mobile vendor is defined.
But it's in submission to power the marshal, right?
It, it is defined in the proposed ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah. Um, I, I don't believe it lives. Otherwise it wouldn't be done.
Well, maybe we can, we can figure out if maybe we can just take one way or the other.
All right. I can, I'm gonna put a pause here in the discussion and open it up for public comment at this time. Maybe that's a great idea. So if there's anyone in the room or anyone on Zoom that'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. I will call upon you. I will ask you to state your name and your address for the record and you have a three-minute block for your comment. I see a hand inside City Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Giordani and council members. My name is Jan Pepler. I'm at five oh one South Main Street in Bellevue, and I am in support of prohibiting sale from mobile vendors. I've already submitted a letter, uh, that I believe you did receive, but I appreciate you allowing me a few minutes to say some more comments. To clarify, my comments are specifically regarding non-food vendors. My concerns are basically two. We need to protect the interests of the brick and mortar businesses which already exist. I understand that this started, because there weren't a lot, but we don't want to force, I mean, with food, but, you know, the businesses that exist are entrepreneurs who have already invested a lot in our town, and it would be grossly unfair to allow anything that would undermine their success. If potential businesses or business owners want to test the waters, they can do this in other ways. They can participate in the Wood River Farmer Markets, or, or we can provide something similar here in Bellevue at Memorial Park, which is, you know, apparently not been on the table, but we could do that. Um, but allowing anybody to simply pay a small fee, and to be clear, anything less than four digits, in my opinion, if you're a business, anything less than four digits is a small fee. Um, and then they can start selling whatever they want on Main Street. I'll see how that benefits Bellevue. Uh, in regards to the rents, and, you know, again, as I put in my letter, we can incentivize building owners to provide mobile rents, if that's what we want to do. Um, my second concern, we need to preserve the visual appeal of Main Street, which is otherwise known as the Business District. Let's be honest, the Business District is Main Street. There are houses on Main Street. We are a small town. We do not have the privilege of having a business district that is just businesses. There are homes here. And when you say the Business District, you're talking about my home. Goes right down to my house. You know, we can't afford our whole Main Street to look like a flea market. I believe that we could have benefited from more regulations that address the physical appearance and condition of food men. If we want to go back and look at that first, um, the truth is, I'm not in favor of pop-up businesses at all. I don't think our town is large enough for it, because again, Business District is Main Street. If you decide, however, that you must approve or allow something instead of just prohibiting, I heard vendors can exist. Maybe they can deal with lots that are currently empty, such as Crystal Harper's Farm property just south of the building material thrift, and put all the vendors there. Allowing these vendors up and down Main Street would create an eye store. Also, please make sure that there's a standard that all vendors must follow, standard design, a standard for hours, maybe possibly even some sort of standard for following your content. Bellevue has long struggled with an image problem. Please, don't do anything that would visually contribute to a poor opinion of our lovely town. Thank you all who would bid you to in your concerns.
Jan, may I please ask you a follow-up question?
Yeah.
When you're referring to non-food businesses?
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to just ask for you to clarify if that is food trucks only or businesses that are selling food items.
I just think of the food, so, um, non-food, I thought meant if you're selling cowboy hats, t-shirts, I don't know what the heck.
How about bags, bags of oranges?
Bags of orange, I thought that that was non-food, because it's a product versus, uh, crop being created.
Wonderful. I just wanted to make sure I was very clear on your, on your
Okay.
I, I think that tracks with the council, so thank you very much.
Craig Beaver, one thirteen South Seventh Street. So, history, short history, last night, hate to be that guy. Um, we had a temporary vendor permit before, three days, I think, maybe five, I don't know. But for staff, it was a pain to do this. There was a guy, Diane knows who he is, that most of us do, Kurt probably does, did barbecue. And so they created the existing food truck vendor, you know, um, but, you know, and, and all this is on our plate tonight is amending that ordinance, right? To let me sell my statues that I carve out of, of, you know, stone or metal, or, you know, there are some apples and oranges out there, right? So, we don't want to, we're just wasting everybody's time in here, you know, um, including mine, you know, but that's, that's where it's at. That's what it's doing. We're not talking about zoning. You know, we're not talking about any of that. Um, so, so that's a little history where the food truck, yeah, it should all be locked, we all travel through towns, Hawaii, you know, Burley, um, they have a whole lot that these food trucks are in, you know, um, but you're never going to get any of these owners out here with those vacant lots to allow that, you know, they're not going to do it. They, 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 maybe they will, maybe the two oh eight lady, not two oh five.
Yeah.
Maybe that spot, I couldn't even barely get them to let us park when we did a disaster drill, fire trucks in there legally. So, every time I drove by that for the last two years, I'm like, what did she do to him to be able to put, you know, uh, tents up and boards and all that, you know, just curious. So, that's.
Thank you. And just for the record, we did receive another written comment from Brooke Bonner. That was provided to the council and will be provided in the record. Are there any other comments, um, from people attending on Zoom? Any hands raised that I can't see? Okay, we've got a hand in City Hall.
Chris Johnson, two ten Far Side Red. Does anybody know the history of how Bumblebee came about? How it started up?
Yes.
Can you share that?
Yes. Uh, the owner of the Silver Creek Hotel, um, approached me and he said, my kids need to make money over the summer. I've got this little trailer. They're using my commercial, well, I guess, I don't know if his kitchen is a commercial kitchen.
It is.
Anyway, they were, they're using his kitchen to prepare their food and take it out to the, to the trailer, and that's how it it was, is an offshoot of
Group that I thought was part of their senior project to develop a business, and I would have ice cream in here in town for three, four years, at least. So, there is some benefit to having an opportunity, um, to provide people, um, a way to grow a business, where they move into a brick and mortar. So, um, I would just constantly keep that available for us.
Okay, one, one moment. Um, without seeing any more hands on Zoom or any more hands in City Hall, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment.
I'm just going to comment as a public, oh.
I don't, I think you're sitting in your council chair, please feel free to comment as yourself and representative.
Amy Davis, two thirteen North Main Street in Bellevue. I have, um, a brick and mortar business, and we work really hard to maintain it, and I appreciate we serve the community with it. One, I just wanted to suggest, I know it can be difficult to open a business. It was a big hit for me to even buy that piece of laundry to reopen that business. But one, and, um, there are other creative ways beside trying to just have a mobile vending spot, be it food or items. The, um, Men's Second Chance Living, another nonprofit, wanted to, they get clothes and donated all the time, and they wanted to be able to have an opportunity to sell and make some money. So, we partnered, we let them partner with us, and we opened up space in our business to allow them to, like, they don't have their own business, but we are selling clothes for them and they benefit from it. And so, I guess I just wanted to invite people to think that there are other creative ways too that we can support. Like, if we're going to be about supporting our businesses, our brick and mortar businesses are just our businesses that are going to be in town. That we pay stuff, what benefit are we getting back for paying that? And I'm not saying we're not getting a benefit versus the impact of a, a mobile vendor. There's some minor, there's some minor money collected, and oftentimes, there is a lot more that has to be put out to provide a level of service to them. That's, and that ends up being a negative impact to the city, so.
Thank you. Oh, for, so I'm hearing, um, Brooke, if I'm wrong, but I'm hearing a couple of things here tonight. I'm hearing that we would like to prohibit all mobile vending businesses. I'm hearing that on the table. I'm hearing that we would like to prohibit mobile vending businesses outside of our current mobile food vendor ordinance, not touching it, leaving the mobile, mobile food vendor ordinance, and prohibiting all non-mobile food, uh, related items to be prohibited. Um, and then I'm also hearing that, uh, we, you know. So, I think there, there's three ways I'm hearing this going. Um, I'd love to have a little more discussion from you and either, um, kind of emotion or direction, or myself and staff.
I have a question, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
So, back to the, um, the ice cream truck. Would, would denial of this ordinance prohibit them from operating?
Denial of the amendment to this ordinance would not prohibit them from operating, because the denial of the amendment does not repeal the current ordinance that allows them to operate.
Uh, I would like to move that we reject this current, um, proposal for regulating the mobile food trucks and come back with a goal, or, right, the mobile vending, and come back with a, a proposal that, um, takes into consideration some of the things we've talked about, and that expressly prohibits all mobile vending in Bellevue. And I pieced that all together following Diane's model from the last meeting where you just add sentences. Yeah, it's okay, I don't know.
Do you have a second? Not hearing a second, motion dies? Our discussion?
I mean, I, I might have said that for, seconded for, for the discussion, but, um, maybe who's got a little
You're got to look, yeah, good night.
I was comfortable with, and that was uh, uh, I I appreciate that the marshal needs clarification now in, and for forcing the code, um, and but I, I guess I don't favor this as an alternative for clarification. Um, if something is necessary, it seems like after a mobile food vendor in that paragraph, other types of vendors are not permitted, would be clarification, it would be necessary to see, which is sort of the, one of the two options that you outlined, which is sort of leave what's here alone, um, but not expand it.
So, leave, leave what is written that we're looking at as is.
Leave what's current code, current code.
Current code.
But not amended to broaden that to, um, more mobile vendors.
Fireworks.
See, we just leave it the way it is.
Yes.
And add it, but
But, but adding, adding, that clarifies for marshals about that, what should be enforced.
Okay.
Which is
What's prohibited?
Yeah.
No other business, no other business type other than the mobile food vendor.
Other types of vendors are not permitted.
So you're saying, just starting the food is okay, we think it's all okay?
Yeah, otherwise leaving it alone. So.
And so I, I'm, I'm, I have a brick and mortar spot, but, you know, I only the food vendors as, that is, are Mexican food. You know, and it might be racist, but, but, you know, I feel so for, like, you know, Mama and Ness, a- and, uh, across the street, you know, I, I don't know, it's only one person so far right now, only one. And it's people, I deal with them all the time. But, you know, I think that it, it sounds right, leave it as, as it is. And for the time being, we can always change it if things get out of hand. And, you know, right now it's one. And it's one of the, I think it affects me the most, not the most, but, for example, the guy that, that's the Silver Dragon, that sells oranges, blankets, you know, stuff like that, and he isn't paying nothing. He's just paying nothing. No vendor, he did. So, I want to give him the right, the tools that he can do it, that, hey, you know, a lot better can be here.
Well, and that's how this whole thing started.
Yeah.
Was rolling into town on a Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
And spending three or four days parked.
Selling oranges and blankets and
Hello Kitty, cowboy boots, and, yeah.
Let me say what you want me to do one more time.
Sure, sure. I, I, it seems like it would give the marshal adequate direction if all that was added to the existing code is a sentence that said, and this would be under the definition of mobile food vendor, I guess, or it could be another limitation, but other types of vendors are not permitted. That gives the marshal with um, direction that he needs to enforce the code.
I agree.
But there's also the thing about fireworks though, too, which we didn't have, but then here, like, just one says, you know, no mobile vendor shall be permitted to sell or offer or sell any fireworks, it's defined. The three dash one dash one, which we don't typically, we don't have.
We don't currently have that. But wouldn't that be covered in, in that addition of that one sentence?
I think so.
Other types of vendors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I would say so.
So that seems like
Matter of time, with the information that you've given us, would it be appropriate for Amy and I to get together and bring you something on the next council meeting
Hmm.
that I could enforce and we can move on?
Yes.
Okay. So, just a, just a takeaway to make sure we're understanding what the, what the staff direction is. Thank you, Marshal Gaston. Um, it is no amendment to the current ordinance around mobile food vendors, uh, but the addition of language that other types of vending be prohibited.
Correct.
Is there any discussion about where mobile food vending should be allowed within the city of Bellevue Business District? Are we in agreeance that we would like it to be limited to the business?
Absolutely.
Business zone, but, yes.
But there's only a few places left in downtown.
Okay.
I also think, after my affirmation, Harvey P ran somewhere, I believe, but that, those guys, you know, had tacos there last year. Maybe he had tents and everything, but in that. I, I don't know, it is.
Thank you, thank you for all that direction. Um, just for clarification from either our, or our, um, or our lawyer, if no action is to be taken, but direction is given, being that it's an action, action item, do we need a motion to deny or a motion to?
Yeah, I, I would go to continue to decide to let the staff, if there's something further, um, I don't know if there's a definite date or just to you, to an indefinite date, either. I think my motion should be one way or the other. Uh, I don't know what the council's preference is as far as agendas and that, but it's fine.
Let's go to the next agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I would move to continue to decide to the next agenda.
Second set. Go, go.
Councilmember Obenup?
Yes.
Council President Shay?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Is it possible?
I mean, just asking her a question, because the, the food The, the food vendors are not required to have. Any sanitation station or anything like that. Is this? Is that something that we need made in this ordinance?
Um, when I would recommend this, would you please send an email to myself um, and the city clerk with uh, what else you would like to see in the. Uh, ordinance amendment that will be presented in today's.
But maybe we could just focus on this and get that seems like a very explicit. Well, we have the ability and if we could maybe be more laser like, like you're, you know, you got there and I think last week you would be like. It would have been great if we got there there last week, so maybe if we were. A little bit more focused, we can get there faster. If we stick on smaller things that we bring it back. For the issues that that you've noticed, but then we can. Make sure we get it done the next time, if we don't make any other changes.
And I promise I won't make the motion.
Yeah.
Um, Councilmember Davis, I'm still open to your feedback. Please email it to myself, the city clerk. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're gonna move on to item number. Seven B in our old business, this consideration of approval of the findings of fact. Conclusions of law and decision for the Myers Law Line Adjustment, Brian Berger.
All right, thank you, Brian Berger, Community Development Director. Uh, so this is the last-ish step in the process of getting my law line adjustments. Uh, finalized, last meeting, you guys came to a decision to approve it with the conditions that are identified in the binding the fact conclusion of law and decision document. Uh, state code requires that all decisions be based on express standards in your code and your plan plan. And that they will provide a written document explaining. The facts presented, how you came to your conclusions. And. Your reason why. That is what I'm trying to get tonight to bring. And bring questions. I listened to your guys' meeting a few times.
Thank you.
Any questions for Brian? Tom?
Yeah, Brian, thank you for your work on this and the. Uh, just maybe a couple of kind of editing things um, in the. First page, which is page one thirty-four of the material. Page. It's headline section two. Um, so it's.
Lotline adjusted standard evaluation.
Yeah, seven page. Yes. It's at the top, it's waiver standard evaluation. It's a section two of the. Findings. Uh, in the second line of subsection A. Uh, she says, any requirements of this title may be granted by the council on basis basis or on a case basis. Said the actual language that.
That is copy and paste it out of code. Uh, it will go on my list of things to clean up that is fault.
Okay, okay. I just wasn't sure if that was copy and pasted. If it is, then we'll say. Thank you. Um, and then the other. Question is kind of on the. The John thirty page or. One, two, three, four pages later. Um, it says at the bottom of that conclusion that except that the roadway must be improved with asphalt. Um, it was, was any width specified in that drawing? Should be verified here and those are others, maybe in the conditions, it's also kind of.
Width of the roadway proposed by the applicant in their uh, exhibit was twenty feet wide. So the only modification to the proposed exhibit was that it must be paved and not a ground.
So then must be improved with asphalt to a twenty foot width. Is, is accurate?
Yes.
Like, for, I guess, council beside whether that's an appropriate addition. Uh, and then the final thing was. Uh, under the motion, under section three and decision order, so notion by council member. Second, uh, and affirmative vote. Um, I, I think it's appropriate to include. The, the votes in there that there were. Um, four in favor and three against, just to be clear that. Um, I mean, and sometimes in findings, people that are minority request that they are bringing being included in findings. Sometimes that works out, sometimes it doesn't. That's not my part of what I'm requesting here, but I, I do think it should be. Clear how the votes. More than just in the running to vote. Again, in my opinion, those are a couple of edits that uh. Suggest.
Any other questions or comments? This is an action item.
That we. And makes motion that we accept the findings, facts.
Show that application.
Second.
Councilmember.
I was going to say, I like to amend that. I'd like to. Make a motion to approve the findings of that. Conclusions of law and decision regarding lotline adjustment twenty five dash.
Second.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
So.
Councilmember Bergen.
Now.
Councilmember Obenah.
Trying to clarify. Let me state that again, your motion.
To approve the findings of that. Conclusions of law and decision regarding the law and justice. Players or adjustment. On twenty five dash.
Yeah, and I, I will clarify that I would probably abstain from voting and not vote against it if the. Amendments that I offered were incorporated, that was actually a big motion. So I don't know.
That is okay.
And let's start over.
Yeah.
Hold on, there's a motion.
There's a motion. Yeah. I would deny it.
Right, can you?
We're still waiting for.
Uh, that was very messy, so I either think we. Let everyone finish their votes and vote one way or the other, or we abandon that if that's. A possibility and sort of, or what, Rick, what are our options there?
Finish the vote.
I can rescind that motion. I would, I would like to rescind my motion. Thank you, Brian.
Tom, would you, would you rescind? Please, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Alright, so we have. A thing to be clean, we'll do a voice vote on. Rescinding the previous motion.
Thanks, Jen.
Or basically. Everybody in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
I.
Please let go.
So um. I mean, the only two things that that I suggested, and again, I would probably abstain because I didn't support this decision here. But I wouldn't vote against the adoption. I think it's consistent with what you all wanted, uh, would be a little clarity on. Uh, must be improved with asphalt to a good width. Um, and then. They specify, well, I'm just saying affirmative vote. Decision for it specified, so. Four, three, vote.
I vote.
Captain, regarding uh, quite clarification and a question. Uh, condition of approval number three, uh, part of this middle final plan application, the applicant shall construct all required improvements, including improve the roadway. Within right away east of subject property from Longwood Street to Chestnut Street, to these specifications provided in the alley improvement. Exhibit provided by the applicant. Except that the roadway should now be paved with asphalt. That is the condition of approval as written. Uh, the roadway exhibits. Uh, specifically that I believe.
Fair, fair enough. Uh, first slide.
Would you like?
There's no, there's no harm in clarity.
Yeah.
No harm in clarity. Again, that's all I was suggesting.
So I make a motion that we accept the findings of fact, conclusions along decision, together with the proposed amendments. They proposed clarification point that the width of the roadway. Shall be as. Proposed on the plat by the owner to be twenty foot. As well. To please include the vote specification. As to how the, the council voted. Regarding lotline adjustment twenty five oh one Myers.
You just say that's the. Of the uh. Minutes as opposed by the conditions or additions to the word by Tom.
Second. Councilmember Obenah?
Yes.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Art.
Sorry.
I abstain.
Okay. Councilmember Mahoney.
I abstain, yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes. The motion passes.
Thank you, Brian. With the council. Moving on to new business. Item eight A, consideration of a fee waiver application for August eleventh. Time for a children's safety course in partnership with the Hope Hunger Coalition. Bloom Truck at Memorial Park. So before you, you have the memorial park application. To the heart. As well as the. Submitted City of Bellevue. Park speed waiver request. Which is being brought before you for consideration.
I will start us off, Mayor.
Thank you.
I uh. Have some questions. Uh. To start off with the City of Bellevue Park fee waiver request form. This is a form. That somebody had to. Intake. Somebody probably had to have a conversation. I'm guessing this may or may not have been our city clerk. Um. It had to be processed, it had to be copied for our packets, it had to be. Dealt with in some form or fashion. Um, yet there is no fee for this fee waiver request. Um, in, in a city. That has very little money, um, even though it does say here total amount requested waived. For clarification, is that what the, the fee for the use of the park? Would be is forty five dollars?
Yes, that's the application.
Yes, but, but there is no fee for us to, to process this, so I guess I'm just saying. It would, it, it seems to me to be appropriate. That we charge a fee for. Requesting a fee waiver. I know that that's.
Get waiver that.
Okay, so you can't get.
Okay, dude, focus on it a little on a, I, I hear you, and it's, I hear you. It's just a question I have. I thank you for that thought. Let's talk about the, if we'd like to. Authorize a fee waiver on this usage of the park for children.
I mean, I would like to say and advocate for the years, if they bring their cleanup event here and that's an added event. And they're looking to do other collaborations, they're supporting kids. Bike safety, I don't know how many kids I thought they'll sit in Bellevue because they just came out on the road. Not looking um, in providing this opportunity to. All of our children. Bellevue, I think. You know, when it's an added service that we're not offering, we're not going out there and providing education to our community. Especially newer people here, I mean.
Yeah. Well, we are, because we, we all pay taxes that pay for the. CSD or the school district. Um. And I know your affinity for the ERC and I have ensured and I agreed with you on the waiver for them because it was explicitly for Bellevue, all of Bellevue. Benefit of Bellevue. Um, we already had a few waiver requests from um, the Hunger Coalition, which has a ten million dollar endowment. This is a forty, they're doing a partnership with the ERC. And if the Hunger Coalition doesn't think that it's worth a forty five dollar application fee that they could front for the ERC. Then I would prefer that we not continue to take from. Our own programs, our library, do, do we all really understand that the last waiver? Took money that could have been given to our own library and gave it. To the Hunger Coalition for their Bloom Truck, which is basically a mobile library that they set up just a few. Few blocks away from our library. And they, they really are tangible impacts, and so I think we've done enough. Uh, and I think that the, like, you know, I move to deny the fee waiver requested for a children's bike safety course. Can never get one.
I would like to.
Hold on, just wait.
I, Mayor. Please. I would like to hear. A full deliberation of the council. Before. This motion moves any further forward.
You can have discussion now for a second.
So there's a motion on the table, there is not a second yet.
Or.
Second for discussion.
I think it should be the forty five dollar fee, but. They getting the rest of stuff. Yeah, I just support the kids. Shame about forty five bucks.
Okay, so if we're looking for full deliberation, Tom, can I get your? Feedback on this?
I, I'm kind of generally prepared to grant this, uh, but. Forty five dollars is. Though not excessive. Therefore, it's a rip to deny it.
Tammy?
For the sake of. Our, supported our, our system, I think that it's important to deny it as well.
Did I get a well, roll of the vote on that?
Councilmember Obenah?
Yeah.
Now, we're denying. Council President Shay.
I am voting to deny the waiver request.
Okay, so the. Motion is for the denial.
I remember to deny the waiver request.
If you would like.
Tonight, that's a yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Motion passes to deny the waiver.
Thank you. Does anyone need a quick break before we move into our budget work session? Take now for our more topics.
Just grab the water.
Okay. I have added our one method workshop onto this agenda. So now we are, we will go ahead and take a five minute recess. Seven forty nine, I'll call the meeting back to order. We are going to move on to item nine, budget work. Uh, tonight, that included in your packet are. Are they, sorry, they're in your green book. Let's move over to our green book. All about us. And we are going to be working in a, in our water and wastewater tabs. Um, I'd like to start us off this evening. Uh, with a bit of an overview of um, how we. Got to the information that is being presented to you tonight before I turn it over to our public work director to present. Um, between myself and the public work director and the treasurer after. Hearing a little bit of feedback from that initial workshop and um. Do an overall assessment of what we think is. An important use of these funds for the next fiscal year. Um, it is not in my recommendation at this time to increase. Any of our water users, water user fees or our sewer user fees. Um, we are working within the budget of what those current fees. Are bringing in in terms of income for our top line. Um, and there has been a uh, reduction in staff. That was previously presented in the first budget work session to uh, more appropriately um. And consolidate the energies of the department and focus um. On the large overarching goals of what needs to be done, which is the recommission of the wastewater facility. Um, bringing the meters. Online um, and starting the meter reading and billing program. Um, and focusing on um, continuing with the completion of our water project. Um, so that will be reflected in your uh. Your payroll line and your. Contractor lines as well. Um, we're looking at. Public work director and operator and a new developed position, which is. Public Works Director, an operator, and a new developed position, which is a utilities and administrative specialist. Um, s- sorry, utility operations and administrative specialist position. Uh, and that is what's reflected in this budget, which I look forward to discuss more with you, and I will turn it over to our public works director to start.
Good evening, Council Mayor, Chris Johnson, Public Works Director. Um, I just got a few quick slides that we can break down more into anything you want to discuss. Um. But as the mayor said, we have been. Looking at what we need to actually operate, what's the minimum staff that we can do? We're still gonna be looking for an operator, and uh it was under treasurer's suggestions, easier to move funds from the contract fees to payroll if we need to in the future. Um, but right now we have a. A J Graham contractor, we'll be looking at his contract, he's been assisting with um day to day operations, sampling and maintenance issues, um, getting our chlorine and a few other things up and running. Um, he's up here three days a week, and then this consolidated position for Kany, we want to take more ownership of uh. The metering, uh meter reading, uh building cycle, and so she will be still doing some day to day operations with uh. Doing just the rounds and then the monthly meter collections, and then also um. Other jobs as as needed to support, um, but on the admin side, she'll take all the meter rebuilds and um. Consolidate them, use self program for now, um. Adjusted, make sure that we are building at the appropriate level, um, at the meter grade, and that we can clean up if we have had any mistakes in the past that we are. Using um the best numbers we have to properly build our customers. Um. Our projects, as the mayor said, um, the primary on the water side will be the uh. Water project, um, we anticipate that probably in March, well before March, um, as soon as uh. Merrick has the preliminary design plans, and we can go out to bid, um, we'll. Go out to bid and hopefully have a uh a contractor by March, um, but we ready to break ground on the project as we move forward next year. Um, that'll leave me opportunity to help that project, and then any other, um, the daily stuff that comes up, the leaks, the customer service. Um. So that's where our staff and payroll. We're looking at with the water grant currently, um, anticipated funds for next fiscal year, three million eight hundred forty six thousand dollars, three hundred and three. Um, the actual available funds for uh payroll, uh projects. Capital expenditures and operations, we're looking at six hundred and forty six thousand two hundred and three. Total payroll, uh estimating hundred and five thousand one hundred fifteen point oh eight. But their operating expenses at four hundred and thirty thousand four hundred and eleven. That will also include the contractors fees, um. But that keeps us up in our supplies, um, our sampling, their procedures, um. Then we got capital expenditures, um, we'll still may look at a couple of small projects, we have additional time, um. But the main priority is gonna be the drinking water improvement program. Total expenses. We're looking at with the bond. Three million eight hundred forty six thousand dollars, two hundred and three for my pay cents. Uh, minus the bond, six hundred and forty six thousand two hundred and three point zero eight. Questions?
Uh, what are the things that make up the operating expenses?
Um, operating expenses include uh field destruct, do the rounds and meter reads, um. I don't have all the line notes, I look over your shoulder.
Yeah, well, I can throw that just for me.
It has the routine maintenance, uh, air maintenance, um, so if we have issues, um, we can keep the water system up and running. Specific ones.
So where do I get that number for routine maintenance, or, I guess I'm just wondering how you break it up, but. I see you have your personnel costs, and I'm wondering.
Suzanne, if I can help here, right after the payroll costs?
Well.
That whole next section is operating expenses.
Okay, so winterization starts two thirds of the way down that first page.
And it goes all the way down, two thirds of the way through the second page. And then it totals.
Oh, yeah, oh, some of the totals. Okay, and so how would I know what parts of these expenses are, for say winterization or chemicals and treatments and. Like you say, the maintenance.
Okay, so let's.
Sorry.
So supplies, um, we have ten thousand dollars, that'll be for um. Chlorine, uh chlorine pumps. Whatever we need for um water treatment, um. We've got repairs and maintenance general. Uh, we consolidate, consolidate that one. Is there, first, we used to have repairs and maintenance water and repairs and maintenance general, we've consolidated all into general.
Yes.
So that's just our day to day activities, if there is a uh line break, um, that we have to go replace, replace. Or have a Lunsford come in and excavate and and do that, that'll be your maintenance general. Um, R and M equipment, non autos, so some of our small equipment, um. Our hand tools, our drills, um. Trailers, tunnels. R and M autos, um.
I I get that you're trying to give me, I guess I'm just wondering how you keep track of how you're spending money for particular endeavors, and then are planning and are working. Through that saying, well, hey, this, we probably look at this, this was a lot more for these particular plans or um these particular efforts and.
We get the treasurer's report and.
That's why I record every month. We we look at this every month.
I I understand that, but but they're also part of initiative, right, so how would I break out, say, what your sp- or how would you de- determine your R O I on something, right? How do you do it? But this is how you look at your R and M auto, and you say. This line item helps me understand that we, that was a good investment on that truck, or?
I have saved five thousand dollars for our, for auto. I know I need to. Routine maintenance, just gear well changes, filter changes, I know I'll probably need a set of tires. And I go from one list, and I say, okay, I need Shelley, I need a first order for Lushwa for fifteen hundred dollars. The next month I'll say, oh, look, I spent fifteen hundred dollars, there'll be forty five hundred dollars, where's the invoice list? It's in the claims payable report that has the invoice that we paid the fifteen hundred dollars for. Uh, new tires. So then I need something else, I need to replace. Uh headlights, we lost a headlight, and those are two hundred dollars. I go to Shelley and like, hey, we still have the thirty five hundred dollars in auto, um, I'm gonna take two hundred and fifty five headlights. Now I get to a point where um she says, Chris, you're down to uh five hundred dollars, and you need to do a thirteen hundred dollar transmission change. We look at, okay, what are other options? Do we go all the way to um contingency right away, towards? Look, we haven't spent anything on uh professional services this year, um, that's, can we move the money from professional services, I mean, we come to a budget amendment, say. If we need to put another five hundred dollars into this from this, and you guys can approve that, um.
So let me just ask you, how how do you determine what you're gonna budget for the next year for winterization and?
I look at three years, two years. This is why we have the twenty twenty three budget here, the twenty twenty four actuals. Twenty twenty four budget and where we're at today, and so we estimate what we spent the previous two years, um. Make some adjustments, say, okay, we need to raise that that line item, or no, we're not really using that line item, so we can take money out of that. That gives us our projections for this next year.
So can you, from this math, tell me what you spent this year, or you will spend what the last time you did this for winterization and freeze protection?
I, what do you do?
I'm just trying to categorize.
What are you saying, winterization and freeze protection, I don't freeze any.
Yeah, what are you, what are?
I understand, is that not something that's that you have any concerns about, there, because we've talked about moving, investing with the. Uh, equipment to move snow and, you know.
So this is the, the water system.
Water, with the, there's.
The water system.
You guys are trying to put part of that in for that truck, for that loader.
The water system is six and a half feet roughly, um, for most water, so it's cold underneath the cross line. So we don't typically have freezing issues unless um. Uh, two years ago, I guess maybe three or four years ago, uh, down at the trailer park, there's one. Off, um, at the very end of that, and they went on vacation, and they didn't leave any water running, and since it's a one way line, um. They ended up freezing all the way back to the road, um, but. That was really on that, it wasn't the city's responsibility, um.
Okay, and and is that also true in sewer, we don't have any issues with winterization with?
What I understand that our biggest challenge is with the winter is being able to access and locate our valves and uh our manholes, so. If we have a house that has main breakers, or we have a main break in the middle of the winter. Trying to identify and locate under two feet of snow where these valves are. That's the most difficult, challenging part, and why we need equipment like the Grader, or water and waste water.
And yeah, it does, okay. All right, uh, I was curious, thank you. Uh, I was curious about, um. I I think it's it's great that there's somebody gonna be working on the billing, so I was wondering where we would see where that is an initiative, and what the cost specific to. Uh, is there a particular customer service initiative, or what what are charges that are gonna be specific to this metered water rollout? I mean, there's significant components for rolling out something like that, so where do we learn? How the money, where money is being spent, and how for that, and how that's gonna happen?
Again, I will be coming from um accounts. The month, what do you call it, the?
My insurance report, monthly.
So what will the software cost that you invest in that you're saying? What's, I'm just wondering about the cost of the rollout, like what will all be involved? So.
Okay, so I spent uh three hundred and fifty dollars on two tablets last week, all right, so there there's seven hundred dollars, um. Neptune, I'm waiting to meet with the rep, and I don't know what our annual or a monthly cost will be, but we're anticipating it to.
But you're, but this is what I'm talking about, this is what I'm asking, and that you're you're trying to give me that number, and I appreciate that, and I guess that's what I'm saying, these things, a lot of this is forecasting. So I'm just asking what you have forecasted for some of these things, such as this rollout, what what are we forecasting that's gonna cost in your budget?
So can I hop in here with you, Chris?
Yes, please.
Okay, so um, I understand what you're asking for, um, I think you um are looking at things. Trying to break things individually down as initiatives, is what I'm hearing, and then you want kind of the. Cost implications per initiative and the return on investment for that. Um. In this budget moving forward for fiscal year twenty six. With the understanding of the limited income we have. And the services we can provide, the intentions of this budget for fiscal year twenty six is to get the metering online. To get the billing cleaned up. By having a particular uh person on payroll focused on that from the metering full cycle, bringing it back in, and to move forward on the water project. Those could be seen as the initiatives for this budget, and could be drilled down a little bit further. Um, I think there's value potentially in the future identifying them as projects. Uh, and then associating costs to them for us to start to look at that in the future. At this time, the way that this budget has come together. Those are in essence the quote unquote initiatives, those are the intentions of completion with this budget.
Okay.
And the way that the information is being given to you is by earmarked on the categories that are used on the treasurer and bookkeeping side. To allocate the correct amount of funds to be able to achieve those initiatives broken out this way. Further, further drilling down in future can be done as those meter projects come online.
I I actually, um, so what you've just described is that this, the department will be obviously pursuing, you know, providing. Um. Uh, project management for the water project, which is part of, you know, that three point two million dollar, that's where that's funded. Then uh the metering rollout. Uh, the metering rollout, now, uh, we don't really know what's gonna be involved in the metering rollout, will that, and and I'm just trying to figure out.
No, you do, sorry, let's put a pause there, we actually, we absolutely do know what would be involved in the metering rollout, so um if our department head would like to just kind of. Discuss where we are with that, and what that looks like in terms of uh the rollout.
So the last few weeks, we've been putting together a list that comes out, generated from Casella that has all of our account numbers, then we've been going through all our meter lists that has the meter, um. Serial number, and then what's called a. M I C, M U C number, that's another.
I U.
M I U. And um, so it it is basically the transmitter for the meter. We've been going through to make sure that the customer list and the meter that's associated with that customer and that M I U number are all matching at the right address. Once we have that, we have Neptune come in, which is the program that actually allows us to do our meter runs. We've been using Haley's equipment to last, um. However long, um, we'll be using their equipment uh this week to finish up this month, but we have the Neptune reader. Um, we just need the software guy to come in, he'll take the. Um, Casella sheet, prepare it to his, they'll merge, and so it will go directly supposedly, it'll be uploadable right in Casup. At that point, we can start looking at with the meter. Our reading at each house, and be able to put a printout that says. How many gallons of water you use from uh from this state to this state, um. After that, we have to do some adjustments to our uh ordinances on how our fees are collected and how we're gonna roll that out. Um, and that's gonna be a discussion, you guys might bring my proposal on how we're gonna change that, we, or just scratching the surface on that part of it. But as our intent by October first to be able to reading the meters, giving people an idea of what their meter rates are gonna be. So what they know from. October, November, December. What their base rate is basically gonna be, what their non um summertime. Irrigation water is gonna be used, and January one, we wanna see those meter grades start being charged for rivers, people that are uh house two, um. Versus a house of ten, uh, are getting charged for the water they're using, we'll need to identify what our. Account rate is, and then what what we're gonna do for our uh meter grades, is it gonna be on a tier structure, is it gonna be. Starting at zero and going into per gallon, per thousand gallons, um, and that will be a discussion when we have. Um, but we should be going, we have everything we need except for the actual software package and the demo, and it merged in, uh, as far as equipment now.
And what is the software, and how much of that?
That is not.
Can I, can I ask a question to ask again?
Sorry, go ahead.
What is onboarding like for that?
Can I just put a pause there really quick, though? I think it's really important that you guys read the department head staff reports, because to say that we don't know what's happening about the meters, I mean, this sort, like. Chris did refer to what's happening with the meter project in his department head report, and I think it's also a really nice time to ask for updates. Um, I think that that there are relevant updates that are happening within those reports, so um. I just wanna make sure we're respecting our department heads' times, that they're putting reports together, that you're reading them, and asking questions about them, and seeking more. Information so that when we again do get to discussions like this. We don't make comments like, we don't know what's going on with the meter.
I'm sorry, and I should have, and and maybe you can help me. This was not the information I was looking for, I was trying to be polite and listen, and maybe other people didn't know, but I understand that part of the process, and I think Jessica was about to ask the question, but I did not ask well. Which is what basically is the onboarding, well, not for the software, but in terms of, we have customers, and we're gonna roll out a change to customers, so I'm curious. About the actual plan, I understand how the software works, I understand about the metering, I understand about.
So you're asking about the rollout plan in terms of communications to our customers?
Communications, and how the data is collected, and what additional things we are considering, um, as a council saying, is this actually the right number, sixty five hundred?
Okay, so, and.
That was a nice question.
Just a real, I wanna, I wanna finish this point, though, is that a question in how it ties into the budget, or is that a general project?
It's it's how we we spend money, because if you, you could say in a very tight situation, or where you couldn't afford to do it. Um, you'd say, gosh, you know, we really can't have customer service, we're not gonna provide these these amenities to people, we're not going to make sure. There are things that we can so do.
I I think I.
And plan for.
I would ask, moving forward, please ask more direct questions like that, so that we can get. I would ask moving forward, please ask more direct questions like that so that we can get quicker to these discussions, let me. Also finish a thought here, um as as communicated in terms of adjusting positions so that we have somebody on dedicated payroll. And water and wastewater who is focused on kind of the start to finish of the billing system so that we make sure that the data that's going out to the customers. Is is correct, um and it is is well uh. Taken in, put into the correct system and and put out in the correct billing way. So that you'll see as a payroll line item, that is a portion of payroll going to that, and then as we have discussed in the general fund. Shifting one of our staff members into a more customer service based position and a deputy clerk position that handles billing intake. Uh payments um and field questions and communications around that, that would then be divvied out into the department heads. You'll see part of that burden of customer service at City Hall through the admin fees. That are getting reimbursed by water and sewer to admin, which Shelley has given supporting documentation on in a couple of different ways. So those would be the tangible customer service monetary sides of it, um I'll let. Chris speak to uh the data collection technology side of it, but I'm gonna jump really quick and pause there if there's not a follow up. And make sure Jessica has her question.
I just want to know where we could get that information, specifically that people would look in here and say, oh, this is the part of this. I'm trying, I just think it's reasonable for us to know very expressly what the money's being used for, what it needs things achieve. When we talk about, and that will, we're spending wisely, I think we all know, I'm not a fan of Cassells. There are better options, there are better long term options, there are, and yet we don't discuss or or we don't get to discuss any of that, and I think it's relevant. For maximizing efficiency, and so that's why I asked the question, so. So I'm sorry, Jessica, go ahead.
Um just more the rollout on your guys this time, the onboarding, just for the technology like. You, did they give you a projection that like, okay. You guys are gonna be, you know, October first is the deadline, how much time is that gonna take?
So.
Uh for you, for you guys to.
So for the last three months, um we've been going with one of uh. Bryson's B E uh consultants and doing the reads of them, um getting used to the uh equipment that we'll be using. Um this last time. How do we do it? We used our reader and then their um uh. Surface, so we were able to see how well our reader works and they were very impressive. Um it really only takes us about. I've heard different reports, but I've heard it, uh when you get from three points in the city, we can get ninety nine percent of gears. There's a couple that we do have to go get digital reads on, um there's a handful that. We believe are not working properly, that we need to get uh replaced out, um so we can read them properly. But as far as us taking on um the reads. At most right now, uh take two hours to get all of the, those just the business reads. But the residential reads, as long as we get our spreadsheets together and they match up what Cassell is saying, what Neptune is saying and and. We get that as clean and neat as possible, it should be very seamless for it to transfer in. Um it should not take a whole lot of manpower to collect it, it'll be more time spent um just going back through, making sure the numbers match the right accounts. And we're not misbuilding somebody.
Diane? Yes, uh Chris, thank you for answering whatever you can. Um I had a question just to double check and make sure that Neptune and Cassell. Are gonna talk to each other because I think that that was one of our problems in in the past and I just wanna.
That's, this is the reason I went with Cassell, um.
Right, I remember.
And again, it wasn't. It wouldn't have been a practical package I chose, but it's one of the ones we paid for, paid for already, we've already invested six months of staff time. Bringing it up online and it'll take me. Say we get two months to, after we start taking our own reads and looking through our numbers and making sure everything is smoothly transitioned. Once we have that key piece done, it'll be easy to migrate to another system if we decide to get rid of Cassell in the future, which I have no problem. But right now, we are so close to getting these meters after we've been telling this town for fifteen years. I don't wanna delay it another year by going into another operating system that we have to relearn, have to retrain. And I'm also okay with the idea of maybe there is a better platform for payroll personnel. And then there's just the billing software, um there's there's options out there, so. Anything's on the table right now, but I wanna say that Neptune, um the full rollout on it is gonna be sixty five hundred for the year. Uh but that includes, I think, some of the stuff that we already purchased that was with the the reader, um. So we're already headed in that direction and they'll be here on. I think they're coming. First week or second week of August and uh. Yeah, I'll get the full monthly cost sheet and everything prepared for the next week.
Any other questions on the water side at this time before we move on to waste water?
Oh, I just had a, under the operating expenses, I saw that the power of a net significant, I mean, is there reasons for that?
Yes. So whatever happened down in Chantrelle, um however, did turn back on the two valves. It has left the Chantrelle running twenty four seven for the last year, um so it's been, it's been running to keep up with the demand need. In the Chantrelle neighborhood, um we've now changed that to where. Now they're getting close from the reservoir, um it goes on. On and off, a- as the Shannon, as the reservoir drains down below eight feet. Uh the wells kick on, pick up the supplement, supplemental water, so last night, um. Last night we used one point three million gallons from eight P M till about six A M. And that went from where the tank started dropping to where it reached the bottom and it started going back up. So that's taken in account. Let's see, it was eight feet of water that dropped from eight P M to six A M. You still have a thousand gallons a minute going into it, plus with the chestnut well kicking in another six hundred and fifty gallons. Um so you get get the numbers and yes, it was one point three five million gallons in that period of time.
So just overnight, some plans keep.
Chris, on the computer software subscriptions there, that's new G I S on the, that. And. Um yeah, I missed a conversation about G I S system, they're kind of what is the starting status and what's your hope for a G I S system?
Right now, right now, we're basically uh piggybacking off of stuff that we're able to get from the county, um. Brian has. What uh which was, we're gonna use huge A S currently, which is open source version of. So it's pretty software, but it's not as good, it doesn't have any uh online interface, so the public can't receive. So my intent is to get two, at least two licenses, we're gonna start with two or three, because Brian's gonna have one for his planner as well, um but. Um we have uh, and we're not, we have quotes for on Esri, um we're just doing a Alakart package to get. Um R T S Pro started, uh we can upload the data sets that we have and start uh coming up with our own database that will have. All our stuff that we currently have, like all that sign material, and we'll be able to import all that, um. As we move forward, we'll get a data collector and so um we have hydrant data, we have various data that we can start combining and building off of. But we'll get the collector and um we'll have two or three uh field collector licenses, um I think. So that twelve hundred dollars, fifteen hundred dollars for a user license and that was uh three fifty or seven hundred for a collector, um.
And so just five thousand, you think will kind of cover the costs?
I have it broken down into five thousand for both water and wastewater and I'll cover, I should cover everything.
Or whatever else you might use as a system for it.
I guess my final question is, will you um your budget cover um keeping the hydrants available? You know, that's been something that, uh we hear Greg is out digging things out and asking neighbors to dig hydrants out, but those are your hydrants and. Is that something that's part of your um expectations for this year that your department will be doing that?
We'll do what we can, we also do ask residents because uh I think it's actually in code, that is residents' responsibility to uh clean out their hydrant, um. We do what we can, uh Greg and his crew, they'll go out on on uh training days and they'll go clean some, so it's a joint effort.
Well, I think it's, the answer is no, it's resident responsibility and I think we just need to know that. We do know that.
I think you just said it's a joint effort with part of the burden being on residents and part of the burden being on city.
And everybody in my subdivision digs out if if there's a hydrant in my front yard, for example.
Uh okay, I didn't, I don't know where ours are, but um so that sounds great, I think maybe that should be in the next, that that it's an ordinance to clean out our. Um hydrants, we'll get them.
I mean, I think, you know, I think there is a level of city, you know, burden education on all of our ordinances and I think there's a level of. Citizen burden on edu, being educated on what the rules are at the city with whom you live in. So I think there's a balance and we're continuing to work on education from City Hall through our newsletter and our communication tools. Um and I ask that you as council members uh make sure you're educated and communicating great information as well.
I'm happy to add some too in time, huh?
Yeah, great.
You know, when it's time to clear out hydrants, you need a public service.
That sounds great, for us at least to tell me.
Right, we we see it every one or two with the mailboxes, the uh post office will put out a flyer that says we want you to, you know. Dig a way out so you're not just putting in squares and we don't want you to pull out your mailboxes so the plows are gonna have to push them back in, so. It's it's just routine stuff, helping each other out.
Yeah, my house is on fire and my hydrant isn't dug out, that's a problem, so we dig it out. I'm al, I'm already ahead of you.
That is actually exactly what we experienced with that fire um on Main Street was the, our, you know, our fire crew got right to digging out that hydrant. In order to, able to get water to.
There's like ten shovels on those trucks.
I'll put it in my neighborhood newsletter.
Everybody in your neighborhood doesn't clean them out. I plowed with multiple, you know.
Uh let's move on to twenty twenty six wastewater budget. I just want to uh. Thank, yes, flags, those are very important, thank you chief for identifying that. He does put flags on all the hydrants in the summer to make it very easy to identify the hydrants in the winter when the snow comes, thank you. Um.
Can we move on?
I, I'm prefacing the twenty twenty six wastewater budget, again, we're saying uh. The priority for this budget is uh the recommission of the wastewater facility. And maintaining uh wastewater services and uh making sure that billing is uh. Clear, accurate, correct and well communicative, uh you will notice in this budget. A uh line item that says bond debt fee, um to be historically, from what I've been seeing in the past years, have not separated out. When that, uh when our user fees are coming in, uh a clear delineation of what is being used towards user fees. And what is being used as a bond debt repayment. Um so I feel that this uh is a nice, clear, transparent way for you as council as citizens, as media to read and say. Okay, from those, you know, the fees that's being collected, um we get a lot of indication about, well, you has the highest fees, well, you has the highest fees. I think it's really important for um everyone to understand what portion of those fees go to service our bond debt. So you're seeing that broken out here um at the top line of your wastewater fund worksheets, um. And then that will be reflected as accounts canceled out, um as one cleaned up line item that says bond principal and interest. Um and those two directly uh take care of each other. So that has been an adjustment just in a, with myself and the treasurer and department head of communication of information for this budget. And moving forward, uh that is what we'd like to see broken out in our utility bills for our customers. So they can clearly understand what portion of the, of their fees are going to uh debt repayment and what portion are for user fees.
So what is that amount?
What is that amount?
In the fee, did you say?
Um I'm saying right here in your.
Or in the, in the, like my ninety three dollars, how much is of the?
Uh I could do the, I can do the math for you right now, once you break this out, but part of that, Suzanne, before I give you a direct number. Is the assessment of making sure that uh our calculations for our E D Us and our bond rates are correct, so I'm not gonna tie a direct number to that right now. I'm tying a percentage of um what we're intaking right now to service the debt, because we know. Our denominator we know right now is our debt and our interest.
Oh no, I I get, I know, and Shelley's been very clear about the number forever and ever, I was just curious if you'd sorted it out and if it was being done by connection or E D U or.
Uh that is still part of the ordinance review and the E D U review.
Okay, thank you, I was just curious if you'd sort it out.
Not quite, thank you.
Baby steps, we're getting there.
No, no, I, and and of course, it's a process, I just, I know. It's a process, yeah, we're just delineating what it, what it is to service, so that is the first step. Um and we will continue, we will continue to work on that, burning that information as it becomes uh available.
Uh absolutely, sounds great.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you, thank you, yeah, um Chris, I'll turn it over to you here.
Nice, Greg.
So start their income, anticipated income. One million eight hundred fifty thousand five hundred dollars, um. That's talking our sewer cap fees, our bond debt fees and our sewer user fees along with. Uh some application and some smaller. Uh salaries and wages. Again. We're looking at a hundred five thousand, one hundred seven thousand and eight cents. You know, we're still using. Myself, the contract operator and then Kami as uh technical uh utility. Her new, her new title, uh. We're hoping that we can find a new, a full time operator, uh again, we're gonna be using a contract operator and I'll be looking for. A contract operator replace uh B E, um. We'll be using one other personnel that's great to stay on after uh Bryson steps away, um. That'll be Nate and he currently has this with uh maintenance of the plant and sampling, um so we'll try to retain him as long as we can, um. Again, we're gonna be flying the position and looking for a full time uh contract operator, at least a part time contract operator that can do similar to A J. Where he's down there uh three days a week and we can monitor the plant um via Skater for the most part, but. We have some challenges when it comes to being able to fully operate the plant with our staff that we have. Uh operating expenses, five hundred and nine thousand and three dollars. Uh capital expenditures, five hundred and fifty six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. With our total expenses again, one million two hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and eight cents.
What would you say are the um costs in here that will be most. Were for your buckets, that would be most impacted by um the sewer. Uh re- recommissioning, commissioning the sewer and 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 is there any expected work on the lagoons and? What have we learned kind of about, and where do you think that's gonna hit your budget?
Um, we've said the priority is get up, get the plant up and running and maintaining itself, uh I would say. The biggest uh increase we're gonna see um is gonna be in utilities power. Since we haven't been operating the blowers and most of the main pumps, uh we're gonna see a significant increase in the power, the utility term.
Skater?
Uh Skater.
Yeah.
Get the new Skater upgrade and then also. Um until we figure out a way to better move our um sludge and our bio solids. We basically have to hire a full time truck driver that takes two to three loads up to Ohio Gulch every day. Um so that's again, manpower, uh you're talking six, eight hours a day, plus the fuel cost and maintenance on that vehicle, so.
Right, so where the, where does that factor in, do you think, Chris, I mean, I I have to imagine that's a pretty significant cost. Anticipating.
Uh right now, um we're doing that, that is understood as a contract labor where we have a hundred thousand dollars, so.
So do we think that a hundred thousand dollars is primarily gonna be used for rehabilitating the lagoons?
The lagoons will rehabilitate themselves for a little while, um what that means to happen is when, once the plant comes back online. We're gonna be taking less sludge into the lagoons and will be taken up to um Ohio Gulch, and so. The plant, the bacteria in the lagoons will start breaking down the sludge that's been left behind over the last years of operation. Now, at some point, um it'll probably be. I don't know, a couple of years down the road, we will need to look at um dredging up and getting up some of that waste, but that's just a. A a five year maintenance cycle, typical.
And you, and you mentioned that earlier, and I'm not trying to.
So, uh I don't have. I'm not too worried about the lagoon operations um moving in this next year. Uh, we do need to do a sequence test on one of the cells. Uh, we need to uh look at um. What do you call it? We need to do some work on the R I basins because they're supposed to be flats so the water gets evenly dispersed, but ours has lumps and ours has a. Uh, a pivot wheel that goes right through a section of it. So at some point, that was brought up by um. D Q that we need make adjustments. I think a lot of your questions, uh as far as that. Are gonna come from the D Q report that we should be seeing here for the next month or so from our visit, um recommendations of what we need to do for maintenance.
And that's why we left repairs and maintenance healthy. Would you say? We left repairs and maintenance healthy.
Okay.
In terms of seventy thousand dollars allocated in the healthy, what I would call like a healthy amount of money for that.
Um, and do you think that would also cover, it, it sounds like we don't know much about the membranes and yet having an overcapacity environment for that long. Could be, have been rather damaging. Is that part of it as well? So maybe contingency.
So the pro- that. The thing with the membranes is we left them submerged in water. It was dirty water, but they weren't pushing particles through, so they were just submerged. And as long as we kept them wet and submerged, they're supposed to be gonna be rebuilt. So we're gonna have uh the oil will come in. It's roughly, I wanna say seventeen thousand. Um, they're gonna come in, show us how to clean them. Right now, we have them being flushed with, uh, we're using the well water down there to refill the trains to get the sludge out of there. And start letting them soak so they can get cleaner. Um, and then we'll put them in a solution, uh citric acid and chlorine. Um, we'll get them rinsed and um they'll show us what else we need to do to maintain them. And then we'll start looking at developing uh an asset management plan that says, okay, if these have been rebuilt to eighty percent. We expect, you know, five to seven years of life expectancy on them now. And then we start putting each year's budgets for um new membrane cartridges and with the newer technology. There, there's new membranes out there where we can actually build our third train and with our current work anticipating to increase our um capacity. Um, at least by a third.
So to answer a question further about Suzanne, this budget does not include the purchase of a third membrane to increase.
No, no, and I did.
I just wanna make that very clear.
No, I mostly just wanna make sure there's the money for what I have to, like, what, what you can't possibly know. I love, there's a lot of moving parts, but. We get the thing, we get the thing back, uh, we get the mechanical plant up, we're looking at the lagoons and. Um, I just wanna make sure there's money there, uh, because also part of that. If this is gonna solve all the stench issues or or all of that, that there is funding in case it is more than you're, than we're anticipating, like, what the. Right, and you would know that now already, but, uh, I guess, but. So that's it. I just wanted to know if there was money, like you said, tucked in for the things you might need it for.
We've got, we've now purchased outside of SCADA. Ninety-five percent of all the expensive parts, everything else, and we should have maybe even more than that in a percentage wise. Uh, we're down to the last few pieces before we start just plugging everything back in and then slowly testing it. Um. I, I don't see like we, we won't need another twenty thousand dollar pump. And as long as something doesn't break. Where I will need pump start at the lift stations. Uh, we have five lift stations. Um, no, four. Anyways, uh, and three of them are running on one pump. And so, and part of that is in some of those maintenance, that's the only ones that I'm setting aside for. Uh, because that's where I see our crucial, um, probably as a pump, I have one more I can pull off, another lift station. And then we're running all on one. If I lose one more pump, we're down a lift station where you're using the vacuum truck. And sucking out for, until we can get a pump replaced, so.
I do wanna remind and clarify that this uh budget begins October. And the, it is the intention of myself and the public works director to make sure we're fully utilizing the funds that have already been budgeted for this budget season to. Uh, get us as far as we can with the recommission. Uh, even based on a lot of the timeline of the work that's to be done in the recommission and lining that up with what money we have left in this current budget cycle. Um, and then facilitating uh what we need in the twenty twenty-six based on that.
So, well, that sounds perfect, but uh, so do you also, you were mentioning getting the sludge out, is that ongoing right now? Is that something that happens every day right now? Starting to get the lagoon sludge out in preparation of your efforts? Because it is, or it only really takes a week for you to accomplish your goal.
That won't start until the facility is recommissioned and we're.
Right now. The inflow goes directly into the lagoon and that's all the solids that are in it. There's nothing that's sorted out. It's not going through any screen. Once we have the plant working, it goes through a series of screens where the biosolids go in one area. All the garbage goes into a dumpster basically, and then we can suck out the wild solids into the truck and take them to Ohio Gold trip to the dry beds. We do not have that option right now, so everything is going directly into the lagoons. Next year or the year after, not this next year, but probably in two years to three years. Um, we will have to probably dredge the lagoons and it's not a difficult process. It's about fifty to a hundred. I mean, we just uh rebuilt. Uh, re-linered the two lagoons for a hundred fifty thousand um four years ago. So there shouldn't be a lot of buildup, but we should have at least three years before it really becomes an issue. Um, the only reason that we would want to do it sooner if we had to is if there was another problem, we can get some of that extra out. But as of right now, once we get to our normal treatment process, what, what we're doing, we shouldn't have an issue.
Thank you. Any other questions in regards to the wastewater budget for?
Did we guess of, of estimate or bid this, the liability insurance? Was that based on a bid?
Yeah, that's based on an estimate from my grant.
Okay. I just want, I started going down, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it was a better recalculate. It was based on percentage of your total budget. The city budget, that's what I base the watering wastewater in general and. Portions of that. So if you wanna refer back to your summary, which is your first page in your, in your book. There's a summary that shows you. Um, there's a water fund line, the top one includes the grant, the three point two million. And then the second line is a look at that picture without the grant. And then the wastewater fund is the last line. And you can see the wastewater fund is down thirteen point seven five percent over last year's budget. And the water, um, it basically went up seventeen thousand dollars. On, so two point seven one percent. So that's a, that's kind of the summary of where those numbers stand right now.
Yeah. Uh, Shelley, did you, I'm sure you already told me this, but where's the, the revenue lines for the, for the funds?
Revenue's at the top.
Okay, right here, sorry.
And that's also summarized on this summary. It's also the first column in your summary.
And a budget revenue is always typically at the top of.
Uh, I agree. I think I was uh looking at, I just glasses are feeling me. I had a different number, I think, for the water user fees. So I, I didn't catch it at first. And the application fees, there was one water. I'm in water, sorry.
And we jumped back to water.
Yeah, sorry.
Is there a question?
Yeah, where are these numbers? These are not numbers. I did not get the same numbers, so I was just curious. How these numbers came to be and I might have.
Um, and you're looking at line.
So water user fees. Application fee for water, I mean, there's seventy-five dollars. No, well, I saw, I guess I was wondering, I was kind of thinking you've got all these hookups, right? There was, so that's one of the red, the dozen main things, right? Where you have that. And then water user fees, I thought was a slightly higher number, but.
Um, we are, we are being conservative because it's an extrapolation of what our current fees are. My hope is that we will see um at current rates with uh a bit of cleaning up with how billing is happening. That we will see an increase in both our um income and our water wastewater. But I think historically, um, it has been practiced to inflate income. And I think that puts us in a peculiar position when it comes to our budget to make that up. So I did recommend going a little bit more conservative in our uh income fees for this year to be a little bit more accurate.
And I think that's spot on, but I did, it does seem like the water user fee should be a very explicit number, because we have a certain amount of users. And we charge a certain amount. And, and so that, like I said, that was not the number.
Yeah, but.
I know that there's.
Quarter to quarter, you add, you subtract, you draw, people connect, the aspirin's down, it becomes a bond rate, so.
You don't just get to multiply, you don't get to multiply by twelve.
No, you do not. So there's complexity.
Great, I just wanted to make sure I was going out, looking at the right numbers for them.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for our department and on water or wastewater? Uh, because for the sake of time, I'd like to call the meeting and say thank you.
Yeah, thank you for.
Presentation. We have re- reached the end of our agenda. I intend to adjourn. All in favor? All right, thank you for a great meeting, guys.